Okay, we're going to get started this morning with invocation from Pastor Bill Holtz of Putnam City Baptist Church, followed by an invocation from Councilman Larry McAtee. Pledge of Allegiance from Councilman Larry McAtee, sorry. Let's pray together.
Father God, thank you for this day that you've made. Lord, we want to rejoice and be glad in it, and also we want to be faithful today in the decisions that you've placed before this council and before the leaders of our city. God, I pray for your divine wisdom. Lord, you've told us not to lean on our own understanding, but to acknowledge you in all of our ways. I pray we would do that today, and every decision that's made would bring glory and honor to your name with a spirit of compassion and righteousness and justice. Lord, I pray for each of our leaders. Lord, I know there are many burdens that they bear professionally and personally. I pray that even in this moment, they could cast all their cares and burdens on you, and Lord, that you would give them the strength to carry out the duties that you've allowed them to be a part of on behalf of our citizens. Lord, we thank you for what you're going to do in these moments. We surrender all of it to you and for the glory of your name, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Haste the flag, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order. I think we will handle the presentations from the office of the mayor first. We have three on the agenda, and we also have some other additional ones as well, and so I will make my way to the front to handle that business. If they could make their way to the front. I've got some proclamations here for you. All right. Good morning. Thank you for joining us. We've got a resolution actually here, and I would ask the clerk to read, so we can learn a little bit more about how you are keeping us and city staff safe.
Whereas Major Robert Coleman is employee of the Safety Division, Sergeant Todd Burkhead, Corporal Kevin Matson, and Corporal Richard Lawrence are employees in the Operations Division of the Fire Department. Firefighters are exposed to potentially carcinogenic materials while fighting structure fires and are advised to decontaminate their bunker gear each time they're exposed to a structure fire. Whereas, fire department staff needed a cost-effective device that can quickly dry decontaminated bunker gear to minimize the likelihood of exposure to carcinogens and sheer weight of the water in the gear to make it easier and safety for firefighters to perform their job functions. Major Coleman, Sergeant Burkhead, Corporal Matson, and Corporal Lawrence were able to design and build internally 46 gear dryers for the Fire Department, which enable firefighters to quickly decontaminate and dry their bunker gear, so they are better equipped to be prepared for their next structure fire or emergency. Whereas, Major Coleman, Sergeant Burkhead, Corporal Matson, and Corporal Lawrence have contributed to the reduction of employee injuries and illnesses for themselves and their coworkers through their collaborative efforts. Whereas, Major Coleman, Sergeant Burkhead, Corporal Matson, and Corporal Lawrence were selected by the City of Oklahoma City's Safety Advisory Recognition Subcommittee as the most deserving employees for the Quarterly Safety Star Award. Whereas, this council desires to recognize Major Coleman, Sergeant Burkhead, Corporal Matson, and Corporal Lawrence for their dedication, professionalism, and commitment to improving workplace safety within the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they hereby thank and commend Major Robert Coleman, Sergeant Todd Burkhead, Corporal Kevin Matson, and Corporal Richard Lawrence, Third Quarter 2019 City of Oklahoma City Quarterly Safety Stars.
All right, let's hear it for these guys. And this is a resolution, so if somebody would like to make a motion, we could. Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much for all you do for the people of Oklahoma City and for keeping yourselves safe in the process. We appreciate that very, very much. And here's this little memento as well. Let's hear it again for these guys. Why don't we bring forward Jonathan, our Employee of the Month? Jonathan, we know you well, but we'd like to learn a little bit more about you, so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Jonathan Gray has been a city employee for 19 years and is the Animal Welfare Superintendent in the Development Services Department. Whereas, since becoming superintendent in 2016, Jonathan Gary has been overseeing divisional activities involving the animal shelter, veterinary services, and field operations. Whereas Jonathan is constantly in contact with city employees, residents, and outside agencies to exchange information and enforce rules, ordinances, and regulations. Jonathan also prepares the Animal Welfare Division's budget, goals, and objectives, and he meets with state and federal agencies to discuss grants, new programs, and laws. Whereas Jonathan was integral in instituting the menacing dog ordinance and can be credited for increasing the shelter's live release rate to 86 percent. Jonathan is succeeding in bringing national attention to the city's animal shelter and representing the division as a leader in innovation for animal care. Whereas Jonathan is a remarkable city employee who cares deeply about all animals and represents the organization well with the public and in the media. Jonathan is professional and consistently displays an exceptional work ethic and leadership skills. Whereas, this council desires to recognize Jonathan Gray for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Jonathan Gary, May 2019 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Jonathan, yeah, let's hear it for Jonathan. Animal welfare's come a long way, and your leadership's a big part of that, and we're very grateful to you. But we want to show our gratitude today by possibly passing this resolution. Do I hear a motion? Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Is there anything you'd like to say, Jonathan?
No, I just feel like I'm blessed to be able to come to work today and work in a career that I love and have such a fantastic staff that just buy into the mission and everything that we ask them to do. And really, they're the, I mean, I wish I could bring the 60 employees that work for me up here to be recognized today, because those are the people that really have made the improvements happen there at Animal Welfare.
Thank you for being such a great example of the best city employees in the country. Let's hear it for Jonathan one more time. Why don't we bring forward our folks for Public Service Recognition Week? This is a really interesting group of people. Come on forward, everybody. And I'll tell you here in a second, when they all get up here, what makes them so interesting. You might have to, yeah, you can get on both sides of the podium if you want. So this isn't everybody who fits in this category, but everybody standing up here right now has worked for the City of Oklahoma City for more than 40 years. So we thought they'd be a great example of Public Service Recognition Week, and to hear a little bit more about that, I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas, the week of May 6th through 12th is nationally recognized as Public Service Recognition Week to honor government employees. Whereas, the City of Oklahoma City has more than 4,800 dedicated employees who care about ensuring our residents receive the quality service they deserve. Whereas, city employees bring incredible skills and selfless service to the broad range of services the city offers. Whereas, the city's achievements and growth is only made possible because of our employees' individual efforts to play a part in making Oklahoma City a better place to live, work, and play. Whereas, from our police officers, firefighters, and code enforcement officers to our engineers, field employees, and office workers, the City of Oklahoma City has some of the most talented and dedicated public servants in the country. Whereas, according to our citizen survey, 57 percent of residents are satisfied with the quality of services provided by the employees, which is 8 percent higher than the national average. Whereas, our employees not only represent the best of public service through their everyday work, but also through their commitment and generosity to the heart of the city campaign, donating more than half a million dollars every year to charities serving our residents. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through 12th as Public Service Recognition Week in Oklahoma City, and he thanks all City of Oklahoma City employees for their dedication, service, and commitment to the residents of Oklahoma City.
Thank you. I know I speak for the council and all the people of Oklahoma City. When I thank each of you for your remarkable service, it makes everything here possible. We do have the best city employees in the country, and you are among the very finest. So thank you so very much for your service, and it's our honor to recognize all public servants this week in Oklahoma City. Let's hear it for this group. All right, let's bring forward our folks for Building Safety Month. To hear a little bit more about that, I'd love the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas, the City of Oklahoma City is committed to recognizing our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. Our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officers, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. Whereas, these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a U.S.-based organization which brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the build environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, and play. Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to keep America great. Whereas, the theme for Building Safety Month 2019 is "No Code, No Confidence," and all Americans are encouraged to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient structures, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, David Holt, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month in Oklahoma City.
Thank you. And we've got Mike Miller here from Development Services to talk a little bit about Building Safety Month.
Wonderful, Mayor. Thank you very much. Just want to say real quickly, on behalf of all Development Center and all the men and women who dedicate their lives to building safety, we are honored to be here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's hear it for everybody who keeps us safe. All right, if our Teacher of the Month, Kara, could come forward. Kara comes to us from Sequoia Elementary, and we'd like to learn a little bit more about you, so I'd ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Kara Viviani has been named Teacher of the Month for May 2019 by the Oklahoma City Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Kara received her bachelor's degree in early childhood education from the University of Central Oklahoma. Kara is in her 12th year at Oklahoma City Public Schools and her 9th year teaching at Sequoia Elementary, where she serves as a pre-kindergarten teacher, the very school she attended throughout grade school. Whereas at Sequoia, Kara serves as a member of the Academic Leadership Team, Great Expectations Committee, Fundraising Committee, Hospitality Committee, and as a mentor teacher and pre-K lead teacher. Whereas Kara centers her teaching style around the relationship between herself and her students and their parents, so that they can successfully work together as a team to ensure that each child in her classroom develops a love of learning and enjoys school from an early age. Kara's favorite unit to teach her students is the one on families, which helps her determine the kind of support each child has within his or her family. She feels that the most important aspect of this unit is when her students learn that, while they are at school, they are also part of a family and they are loved. Whereas Kara reminds us that teaching is one of the most important professions that one can choose, as there would be no doctors, lawyers, or other careers without first having teachers. She believes there is no other profession that makes such an impact on future generations. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Kara Viviani on her selection as the May 2019 Teacher of the Month by Oklahoma City Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Kara, every Friday, as time allows, I read to pre-K or kindergarten kids, and that is a tough 15 minutes. But you do that every day, and it's an amazing gift you give to the kids of Oklahoma City and to all the people of Oklahoma City. So thank you for that. We want to adopt this resolution. I think it's got a really good chance, but let me, let me turn, I believe, Word 2, Sequoia Elementary. Am I correct? Would you like to make a motion? All right, we've got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You're the Teacher of the Month. Thank you so much. Let's hear it for Kara. And we would love for you to say a few words, if you have a moment.
First of all, thank you for honoring me as the May Teacher of the Month. I am a product of Oklahoma City Public Schools, and when I graduated with my teaching degree, I just assumed that I would work in Oklahoma City Public Schools. I believe our students are some of the most amazing kids I've ever met, and I'm very proud to be able to be a part of their education.
Thank you. Let's hear it for Kara and all our teachers, and that is yours. All right, one last bit of business, and I would ask the clerk to join me, and I will do the reading.
Can I have her?
Absolutely, absolutely. Whereas, the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas, the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas, the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas, the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas, the municipal clerk serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Community, and whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk and this 50th anniversary of Municipal Clerk's Week. Now therefore, I, David Holt, mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim May 5th through May 11th as Municipal Clerk's Week in Oklahoma City, and further extend the utmost appreciation to our municipal clerk, Frances Kersey, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Let's hear it for our clerk.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is really special, and I really want to recognize the municipal clerk's office of the City of Oklahoma City, the best ever. And Jennifer, would you stand, please? Jennifer Green, Demetria Hart, Miki Graham, Cynthia Workman, Tricia Williams hiding back there, and then of course, David Reitz is downstairs, and Angela Jones, but they make the job fun. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Let's thank all of them. this morning, but lots of important people to be recognized. We now come to other items under Office of the Mayor. These are some appointments, Items D through H. We can take those with one motion. Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to Item 4, Journal of Council Proceedings. Items A and B, we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to Item 5, Requests for Uncontested Continuances. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, on Page 5, this is an unusual one. This is one that we're not striking from the agenda, but we're making an amendment to this. This is on the Consent Docket, on Item 7B1, and this is just a pricing agreement renewal after posting the agenda. Global Security Corporation, the first vendor that's listed on that, notified us that they did not want to renew, so we're going to strike their name from that, but we will keep the agenda item on, and the Safety and Security Services Corporation will continue their services. So it will just change that, amend that one part of the item. And then on Page 9, under 7T, we are going to defer this item to June 4th. Item 7T will defer to June 4th. On Page 23, Item 9L, we will defer this item. This is on Street Improvement District, Street Improvement Assessment District, number 1627. We will amend that, defer that, I'm sorry, defer that to May 21st. On Page 24, Item XP1, under Unsecured Structures, we're going to strike all of these items. Item E is 217 North Tuttle Street. The owner is secured.
I'm sorry, where are you exactly? Page 24?
Page 24.
91?
9P1.
Got you.
Yes. E is 217 North Tuttle Street. We'll strike that, because the owner is secured. G is 2122 Southwest 10th. The owner is secured. H, 2638 Northwest 11th Street. The owner is secured. And I, 1420 Northeast 12th Street, to re-notify the owner. On Page 25, Abandoned Buildings, Item 9Q1, under Item E, 2122 Southwest 10th Street. The owner is secured. Item F, 2638 Northwest 11th Street. The owner is secured. And Item G, 1420 Northeast 12th Street, is to re-notify the owner. On Page 28, Item 11, this is Items of Council. Item 11C, this is the West Resolution Regarding the First Christian Church Property as a Historic Landmark Overlay District, Designating the Church as a Property as a Historic Landmark Overlay District. We're going to defer this item to May 21st.
Okay.
And that is all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We'll go to Item 6, back on Page 2 of your printed agenda, Revocable Permits. We have 6A, Revocable Permit with the American Heart Association for the 2019 Central Oklahoma Heart Walk. Do we have anyone to speak? Casey? Welcome, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Casey Johnson, 3401 Northwest 63rd.
And tell us about the event.
We'll be having our Heart Walk on June 1st, 2019, with the Heart Walk Festival at Bicentennial Park, and then the walk will go downtown. The funds raised go to research for heart disease and stroke survivors, and we encourage healthy heart living at the walk.
Okay. Councilwoman Hammond?
Thank you for hosting that. I move the item.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Have a great event.
Thank you.
Got 6B, Revocable Permit with the Boxer Rescue of Oklahoma for the Bark Walk. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Don't see anyone signed up. Are you coming forward? If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Amy Grettiman, 225 North Addison Drive, Hinton, Oklahoma. We are hosting Bark Walk, which is May 18th at Bicentennial Park. It's just a mile walk around the park, and then a pet fest immediately following with food trucks, vendors, bounce house, fun things for kids and families, and the proceeds go to the Boxer Rescue of Oklahoma.
Councilwoman?
I am particularly excited about this, given that I love watching dogs walk around hearts, so I move the item.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Have a great event. 6C, Revocable Permit with Oklahoma City Beautiful for Oh What a Beautiful Morning, and I see Lisa Seiner here, if you wouldn't mind, for the record still stating your name and address.
Yes, I'm Lisa Seiner, at 1509 Fair Cloud Court in Edmond, but I am here on behalf of Oklahoma City Beautiful, and we are having an event on May 18th. It's a blooming brunch. It's going to be a beautiful morning, and we invite you all to come, and we will raise proceeds for our Oklahoma City Beautiful Harvest Program, which puts outdoor classrooms in elementary schools.
Great. Councilwoman?
Yeah, another cause very close to my heart. I love what you all do, so I move the item.
Got a second, I've got a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Have a great event, Lisa. 6D, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with Girls on the Run, Central Oklahoma, to hold the Girls on the Run of Oklahoma County Celebratory 5K, and it looks like we have Leslie Littlejohn here to speak?
Yes. And Leslie Littlejohn, do you need me to give my address, or?
Sure.
3117 Findhorn Drive in Edmond, Oklahoma. This is our ninth year to hold the Girls on the Run Celebratory 5K. The girls, over 550 girls this year, have completed 10 weeks of classes about self-esteem and empowerment and are hoping to finish their 5K this Saturday, and we're all going to pray it's going to stay dry. But they have a celebratory 5K in this area. We have over 550 girls, 175 coaches, and about 400 community members running in the 5K this Sunday downtown, Bricktown, towards the Research Park.
Councilwoman Nice?
I must say, it's nothing better than seeing over 550 girls.
It's a lot of fun. We'd love for you to come.
So with this, I wish you great success, and to move the item.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Have a great event. All right, we'll recess the council meeting. We'll convene now as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have Items A through G, and we can take those with one motion. Got a motion in a second, and I'll deem that that motion is for F1, not F2, and any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC-MFA. We'll convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have Items A and B, which we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we merely have claims and payroll, which we debatably don't have to vote on, but we're going to do it anyways. So, I'd take a motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on page five of your printed agenda, item 7, the Consent Docket. We already had a striking on item B. I know we have presentations, and we also had a deferral of item T. I know we have presentations on R and AL and AP. Is there anything else that a council member would like to talk about or pull out?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull out, I believe it's 7Z3.
Z3. You just want to, you just want to talk about it?
Just want to speak to it just for a moment.
Okay.
The street enhancements on the walk.
Yeah. All right, cool. We'll get to that. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody down here?
Yes, I'm sorry, 7X1 and 2.
Okay.
And 5.
And 5, okay. Okay, we will take them in order then, which means we will begin with 7R, Presentations on Some Public Art.
Yes, Robbie Kensel is here from the Planning Department, is going to present these projects.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I want to recognize, I'm Robbie Kensel, I'm the Liaison for Arts and Cultural Affairs in the Planning Department, and I want to recognize Randy Marks, who is also our Public Art Project Manager in the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs. And while he's pulling this up, did want to tell you a little bit about the 1% for Art Ordinance. In 2009, City Council adopted a 1% for Art Ordinance for buildings and parks, where 1% of the budgeted construction cost is used to commission public art. We're going to talk to you today about five different projects that are all under MAPS, and I'm going to explain to you the process very quickly, where each of these is in the process, because there is a process for commissioning public art. As I said, I'll be speaking about five different public art projects under MAPS 3. And so, let's go to the first slide. This will explain the process for securing public art. Basically, there are two different processes we use. On the top part of this slide, you'll see anything over $25,000 begins with City Council, and we ask you to authorize us to announce the project. And then, we go through, there are three very important ingredients in the process. One is that stakeholders are involved. The second is that the artists prepare site-specific designs for the project, that it represents meaning. And the third is that when we negotiate contracts, that these are done with longevity in mind and keeping maintenance at its lowest point, but still delivering the best public art for the project. The second type of process we use is called the Pre-qualified Artist Pool. We announce this through council every year. In fact, on April 23rd, you authorized us to announce it again. The artists that get into the pool stay for three years. This leads to other things, like our Artist in Residence Program was selected from the pool. But these also go through a process where stakeholders select finalists, the finalists visit the site, and then ultimately, projects are selected and go through Arts Commission and come to City Council twice. We ask you to authorize negotiation of a contract, and then we ask you to approve our final agreement. So, here are five projects. The first two are the Upper Scissor Tail Park and the work that is selected now, recommended for the MAPS 3 Convention Center on the interior of the facility. So, this is Taking Flight by Jason Klemoski and Leslie Chang of Studio KCA in Brooklyn for Upper Scissor Tail Park. And this is item P, $500,000 commission, and this is at the final approval agreement stage. This is Virtual Sky by Susan Narduli Studio and Tina Agassian of Horton Lee's Brogdon. This is item R4, and we are asking you to authorize staff to negotiate the contract on this. This is a $1.3 million commission, and it will be in the main atrium of the Convention Center and also in the secondary atrium. And this is a combination of aircraft cable, LED lighting, titanium rods that will hang, and then it will also collect a virtual library of data and have motion with the light. Then we also have three sites at the Lake Draper Trail, and you can see each one of the sites here on the map. The first one selected, and this is at the authorized negotiation stage, is B-52 by Daniel Moore of Oxide Studio in Arizona. And Daniel was, when he visited the site, he was really, he's a bicyclist, so this uses bicycle parts. It also picks up a little bit of biology at these sites, because these are naturalized sites. And also, he kept seeing the B-52s fly over the site, so he wanted to bring that into the design as well. And that's why he calls it B-52. And this will have a bearing assembly and will move. This is Convergence by Don Narcomy, and this represents health and healing and strength. And the artist is going to use Colorado flagstone for its strength and then Osage wood, because this wood has already lived over 100 years and still looks like this, and he thinks it can live 100 more. And this is called Buy Ya Car by Gabriel Friedman at Site 3. Also, we're asking you to authorize negotiation. Buy ya is evidently a kind of a, it shows, I've made it. And so, this is to make you feel, when you get to the site, I've made it, I've gone this far, I'm celebrating this moment. So, these are the five projects we have for you today. As I said, when I recognized Randy Marks, he will be managing these projects. And if you have any questions at all for either one of us, here's our contact info. And we will also be showing all of the progress of these works on all of our social media feeds.
Thank you, Robbie. Any questions for Robbie?
I do. Ms. Robbie, I know we're talking about these particular items, but for those who are interested in becoming a part of the artist pool, I know there's a boot camp coming up. Will you make mention of that, please?
Thank you very much for asking about that, yes. So, when council approved the announcement of the pre-qualified pool on April 23rd, we had already been working with Oklahoma Contemporary and Midtown Rotary to fund an actual boot camp for artists. We're going to be spending four hours from 1:00 to 5:00 on Sunday, May 19th, working with artists and helping them understand the process. You know, it's kind of like a job interview. You can say, oh, you should apply for this job. But unless people understand what the process is to apply for the job, what the culture is at the place, you know, how you might be competitive, they won't really be successful. So, we're trying to help artists understand. It'll all be taught by artists, and that's where Midtown Rotary comes in. Midtown Rotary will be paying each of the artists that will be helping us teach the boot camp. And so, they'll be sharing lessons learned.
Robbie, I have a question. And I know you all do a great job in terms of selecting the art project, but with respect to the Convention Center art project, is there a place we could see a simulation of the artwork, or do they provide that, or just a photograph?
We have a full packet of renderings that we could forward to you.
Okay.
Yes, and it will give you quite a feel for different photographs taken from different floors at the Convention Center site. Like, on the second floor, you can see out the windows to west of this facility, so you can see it with the sunset, as you would at an evening event. And we've got some other different renderings, if you'd like to see those.
Please, thank you.
Councilman Stone?
Could we go back to the Buy Ya?
Certainly.
Artwork? Can you, I don't know if I'm seeing it clearly. Can you maybe describe that a little more?
Absolutely. So, this is a vintage car. This is like you've seen probably at other sites that become great destination sites around the nation. And so, what the artist has done is procured a vintage car that actually was at one time owned by his family. And what he'll do is he'll remove all things that could be removed, you know, like the latches from the door, the glass, things like that, and he'll fill those in with metal. This will be a totally secured and contained unit, that he will lovingly create, you know, kind of a seamless composition of Buy Ya Car. And then, it'll be sunk into the ground so that nobody can move it until it is ready to be retired. But the big meaning behind the Buy Ya Car is, first of all, is a destination, that you arrive there, and then that you're celebrating this great event because your strength helped you make it. Because this is an extraordinary trail.
That's good. It'd be a great trail, then.
And you have to say, "Buy ya."
That's right. Everyone has to say, "Buy ya," when you get there.
It does look like it would kind of be a magnet for graffiti, though, on that.
So, the Arts Commission asked the artist about that. What would happen if graffiti happens here? And the artist said, you know, I kind of see it as kind of a living piece of art, that that may be okay, that it becomes its own statement at this site. So, we are working on an agreement with the Water Utilities Trust and the Parks Department, who maintains it, and we're specifying by the time we get to final contract, what maintenance means, what expectations are, and then that way, everybody will understand, you know, what happens if it has some graffiti. And there might be certain kinds of graffiti that could be removed.
Well, I just want to commend the artist, I guess in spirit of Bike Month, to take, decommission a car off the road, so I appreciate that.
It's a shame we couldn't use one of the cars that we drug out of Draper when we drained it down.
Only the councilman from Draper can make that.
That might have helped his budget.
The three pieces around Draper are extremely diverse. Was that done on purpose, like the styles are?
Absolutely, absolutely. Councilman Greiner, as an arts commissioner, I feel like you plugged that question intentionally, because yes, each site, as the artists visited the site, they were able to select the site for their artwork, and then, of course, come up with their own conceptual design. And they were selected by the committee because they had very different styles. So, there were five finalists, and then three were selected for commission.
And then, just going right off of that, I'm looking forward to advertising this boot camp. That seems very exciting. How can I help and what are we doing in terms of outreach to our universities? You know, Councilwoman Nice and I, we met with the Black Student Association at Oklahoma City University, where I am both alma mater, what do you call it, alumni? And I teach there. And they were, some of the students were concerned. They're like, how do we get our voices added to, you know, the different art projects around town? So, I'm just curious what I can do to help promote that, and what is that outreach looking like to OU, OCU, OCCC, UCO, Rose State College, OKC, all of them?
Right. So, we have been working with several different cultural advisory groups, Black Museum and Performing Arts Center, Inclusion in Art. There's another group that we've connected with in Tulsa, whose name escapes me right now, but they did an exhibition at Art Hall behind the Tea House. Oklahoma Contemporary is helping us. In fact, they created all of our social media broadcast materials. We've produced posters that the Midtown Rotary has distributed. We've got our Strong Neighborhood Initiative neighborhoods have been helping, and also our commercial districts have been helping. But as far as the universities themselves, we have not done a good push there. So, I would love for, to go ahead and circulate some additional information. I know Debbie Martin had helped circulate emails, but we can do that again with links too, so it doesn't overburden your mailboxes. And that way, it brings it right back to the city's links on our OKC Arts website, is where we have the links to the poster and the advertisement for both the pool and the boot camp.
And then, on to Councilman Stone's question about the graffiti, and something I would like to see us, you know, consider as we move forward in conversations about parks and recreation and art. We had the author for For the Love of Cities was here recently, talking about parks and loving, well, loving your city. And there was one project, I can't remember where it was in our country, where one of the walls had like a paint-by-number kind of design on there, so it would be like, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, whatever, you know? And you and the community would get your number, and then you would get to go do your design there on the wall. And it became this sort of community engagement piece, and then it actually decreased the graffiti, because people felt like they had already expressed themselves, and they became actually very protective of it. So, I'd like to see us, you know, think about that as we move forward into conversations about, you know, how do we reduce crime in our neighborhoods? Well, maybe by having more art and getting the engagement of those kids. Give them something to do. Trust me, I teach middle school. They need something to do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
Yeah, thanks for all you're doing.
Okay.
Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you, Robbie.
Can we, Mayor, can we vote on 7R3 separately, please?
And which one is that? Buy Ya?
That's the Buy Ya, yes.
Okay. Currently, we don't have a motion on the table. You're not going to make that motion, are you? We'll hold it. Yeah, okay. Well, just somebody remind me that we'll do that separately. Okay. Moving on, we have 7X1, 2, and 5, that Councilwoman Nice wanted to speak to.
Yes, I can just take them all at once. Just want to mention about the reservicing on 4th Street from Lincoln to MLK, as well as Northeast A Street from Body to MLK. And we're also looking at an area of North Lincoln from Kelly, from 8th to 6th Street. So, it's going to be some happy cars, very still. Just wanted to make mention of those streets.
Great. Okay, then that brings us to 7Z3. Councilman Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. So, as Councilwoman Hammond just mentioned, it's Bike to Work Month, or, well, yeah, Bike Appreciation Month, and they were biking to work on May 17th. So, I biked this morning from the Paseo where I live, and I just want to speak to the importance of this street enhancement that's going to happen in Paseo. I've said this in many public engagements so far, but, you know, Paseo is the first commercial district built outside of downtown. And when G.A. Nichols designed it, it was a place designed for people to walk out their front door to sidewalks and crosswalks and street lamps, so that they had access to the basic needs. It was the cleaners, the grocery store, the schools, the parks with those recreation I mentioned earlier. And it was the vision for my campaign to bring that into the 21st century, to add bike lanes, to have, you know, places for my kids to go after school, to give them recreation, to give them something to do. And this street enhancement project is going to be some major first steps in bringing that important district into the 21st century. And it was so cool biking to work this morning from a place that used to be a farm, right? That's what the Paseo used to be, used to be the country. And to be able to bike through Heritage Hills and Mesa Park and Midtown to get to downtown this morning, I felt like I was back 100 years ago. So, just wanted to draw attention to this. I also wanted to make a note to the people who call the Paseo home, that there will be community engagement pieces to this as well, so they'll get to add their voice to what the look of a 21st century Paseo looks like. I suspect it'll look pretty similar to what it looked like 100 years ago, but this time with people with disabilities in mind, people with strollers, and I'm really excited to be a part of that neighborhood. So, I just wanted to call attention to it in this moment. And everyone bike to work on May 17th in all you can. Thank you, Mayor.
Cool. Thank you. That brings us to item 7AE, which we've actually had a citizen sign up to speak on, Larry Ball and Tammy Hines. And 7AE is Agreement for Construction of City Street with Gladiat Physicians Group, LLC, et cetera. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Larry Ball, and I'm an attorney with Hall Estle here in Oklahoma City. And we are, one of, our client, Gladiat Country Club, is one of the parties to the underlying litigation that is ongoing with respect to this piece of property and that this contract will affect tremendously. My associate, Tammy Hines, was here two weeks ago. I was out of town at the time, and she, I believe, presented and answered your questions. I believe, presented and answered your questions. We have since then submitted to you a memo with some additional information that we felt like was pertinent to this process. I want to say just a few things, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Hines to answer any questions you might have. But this is essentially a private dispute between private parties. Gladiat Physicians Group wants to build its driveway across my client's land without paying for it. Judge Ogden in the District Court, after open hearing, rightly ruled that this would be a trespass for somebody to build a road on my client's property or a driveway without my client's permission. So Judge Ogden says it would be a trespass if he did that. They did it anyway. We went out there on a weekend, saw that they had started, and Judge Ogden entered a temporary restraining order stopping them from doing that. They are now here asking the council to enter into this agreement to make an end run around Judge Ogden's order, so that the city will build that road for them. They believe that the city has the right to build that road on my client's property without compensation. We obviously disagree. So this is a for-profit developer seeking to use the city process to build a driveway across my client's property over my client's objection without any compensation to my client. And it's important to note that this little piece of this section line road that would be built is going to serve this building, and that's it. That road's never going any farther. There's no, no room to put anything else back there. This is going to be their private drive to their building. It's a, it's a, it's a building that is being built by an LLC that's made up of a local developer. I think he has some doctor partners, although I'm not certain about that. But it's a, it's a, it's a for-profit enterprise. They're building this building to make a profit, and they're asking the city to wire around a process that has been ongoing in court for over a year now. And it's, it's our view that the city should not take part in what is essentially a private dispute. There is going to be a dispute with the city if the city goes ahead and builds that road. We believe the city has to compensate us for that. I know the city council, the municipal councillor and the city attorney's office disagrees with that, but we believe that to be the case, and, and we will pursue compensation for that if the city moves ahead with building this road. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hines to describe the materials we've given you and answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Council members, Mayor Holt, I'll be brief. I hope each of you have had an opportunity to review the materials we provided to you. And I just want to point out that we did cover a couple of inaccuracies that were stated to this council last, the last two weeks ago. Some of those issues that we discussed in the materials that we provided were, for example, the statement made that no condemnation proceeding would be required. We disagree with that. Based on our reading of the Oklahoma Constitution, the applicable statutes and case law, there are condemnation proceedings that will be required, since this roadway has never been, actually, let me rephrase that, this property has neither been open nor maintained as a public highway. We also touched on the statement made that this is the quote-unquote "extension" is the only way onto this property. That, in fact, is not accurate. And so we described in there an access easement that this development actually has, which would require it to only move its proposed extension roughly 12 feet to the west. There is allegedly a pipeline, which would make it more expensive. That's our understanding. It's never been explained to us why they couldn't shift it 12 feet, which would make it to where they are not trespassing on my client's property. And so for that, we disagree with the statement made that this is the proposed extension is the only way onto this building that is being built. So if there are any questions, we are more than happy to answer it. If anything is brought up, we are more than happy to provide our opinion on that topic should anything be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 7AL, Joint Resolution with the Oklahoma City Airport Trust, adjusting parking rate scheduling. I understand Mark Cranenberg has a presentation.
Yes, Mark has a presentation, real quickly, from the Airport Trust's approval of these parking rates and the council's approval that's requested today.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, Council. Mark Cranenberg, the Airport's Director. This item is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Airport Trust, and it is revising some of the public parking rates at Will Rogers World Airport. The Airport Trust approved this resolution at its April meeting, and the rates are scheduled to take effect on May 14th. The reason we are revising the rates for most of our parking products is to generate additional revenue from our parking operation, so that we can pay for numerous capital improvements associated with our public parking facilities that are planned in the next five years. There is no greater touch point for customer service that impacts a passenger or visitor at Will Rogers World Airport than our public parking operation. Airport's public parking encompasses a variety of parking products with over 7,000 parking spaces and numerous facilities available to the public. Most of these facilities, while functional, are getting very old and require more periodic and frequent maintenance. To provide the public and the airport customer with the best possible parking experience possible, it is necessary that we ensure that we have the financial resources to, number one, maintain what we have, number two, improve what we have, and last, construct new facilities when demand or circumstances warrant. I'd like to call your attention to the projects that we have recently completed over the last few years. I believe in this item, it says that in the last year and a half, we've sent about $7.8 million. Actually, that's been since 2013. I want to call out just a couple of projects that are of significance on what we've done recently. The Garage A waterproofing project, as you know, we had challenges with the two-story garage in our waterproofing of that, and it's actually been about a year and a half closed. That opened up a few weeks ago, so now we have short-term parking, which is now relocated back to the upper level. And the lower level is now, we're in process of using our premium parking operation, and that has been very successful. I can tell you that about Wednesday of every week, it nears capacity, and it stays at near capacity the rest of the work week. Also, remember, in this premium parking area, we are experimenting with reserving certain number of spaces for reserved parking, so that people can go on flyOKC.com and for a $5 reservation fee, that actually, they can actually reserve parking for their trip. The other one I call to your attention is the recently installed Parking Revenue and Control System. This is a significant project for us because it replaced all of the infrastructure for all of our parking facilities. It updated all of the hardware, all of the software. It also allows us for better tracking of activity, much better auditing of our parking operation, and it enhances the airport revenue. Some of the benefits of that project were the pay-on-foot kiosks that were installed in the terminal building and also in the pedestrian tunnel. We updated the toll plazas so that we could have more auto exit lanes that are cashier, not manned with cashiers. We also installed the red and green lights in Garage B, so people could find when spaces are available, and we have level-by-level counts in Garage C. These are the projects that we're anticipating for the next five years, and every facility that we have in our parking operation will be touched. We'll be doing reconstruction on all of our surface lots. We actually have a project out for a bid now for our lot number one. Our two-five-story parking garages will undergo repairs and waterproofing as well, as we did for Garage A. And this is just the number of preliminary cost estimates that we have to date. This does not include the architectural and engineering design fees that will be baked in to these projects over the next five years. And some of these projects will actually cost more than what you see here. For instance, we'll do a painting study on painting the two garages that we have. Actually, when we do that project, it will cost much more than that. I want to go back one, Karen. I do want to talk about the new surface lot number four that you see. We did a feasibility study, and as you know, sometimes when we close down surface lots or levels in parking garages, we want to make sure that when we do that, we're able to have a place so that parkers can be displaced. And we know that covered parking in Oklahoma is, is paramount. It's a desire. And so we have, in our feasibility study, outlined where we can put a 800-space surface lot in the former location where the rental car service centers were. It's just north of Lot Number Three. All the spaces will be fully canopied, like our Lot Number Three is, and we will have dedicated shuttle service to the terminal building. We bench our, benchmark ourselves in a lot of different areas with other airports, and parking is just one of them. I just wanted to show you our peer airports comparison. And as you can see, even with the increase that we are asking for, we are still at the low end of the garage rates, all-day garage rates, the long-term traditional surface parking, and also our economy lot. And I'll go through our current prices today. So we're not changing anything with the premium rate. That still stays at $18 a day. We have Lot Number One currently at $5 for 24-hour parking. Our Lot Two is only $6. That's the north lot, which is north of the garages. The canopy lot, which we call Lot Three, which is west of the terminal building, that's actually walking distance to the terminal building, and our garage rate today is only $9. The hourly rate stays the same. Holiday lot stays the same, and the reservation fee stays the same. So these are the proposed rates. In Lot Number One and Lot Number Two, we're going up $1 per day. At Lot Number Three, we're going up $2 to $9, and that's really because of the benefit of the canopies. There is a benefit of protection of the car there. Also, there is dedicated shuttle service to the terminal, even though it's in close proximity, and a lot of people, if they only have a carry-on or maybe one bag, do prefer to walk to the terminal. It's a very popular lot. And the garage, we're going from $9 to $12, and as you saw on the previous slide, that's about the lowest rate that's in the peer survey. And the other three categories do not change.
Mark, is the, the reservation is just a one-time fee?
It is.
Per day of the premium parking?
That's right. And really, we're experimenting with that, and probably, I will be honest, at some point, we may probably increase that reservation fee, because for $5, you can reserve a two-week vacation and have a reserved spot. But we're playing with that. We're seeing how that product pans out. I can tell you it's very popular, and I anticipate maybe having more reserved spots in the future. So we did a cash flow analysis. This was a business case, basically trying to generate revenue so that we can pay for capital improvements. You can see the parking net cash flow that we currently have that contributes to the general revenues of the trust is about $7 million. With the rate increase, we're anticipating each year, we should get about $2.7 million in additional revenue. But then you factor in a minimum of at least $3.5 million for the next five years, and the actual net contribution of the general revenues to the trust actually is a little bit less than what we're receiving today at $6.2 million. So this is all relative. Certainly, the, the parking activity can adjust these, but just to show you, we did the, the working paper, so to speak, on this, and it shows that we can afford to do these projects with the rate increase. And I think it's very important that our public deserves the best possible product that we can deliver. Be happy to take any questions.
Mark, some airports have introduced valet parking. Is that something you've looked at?
We've looked at valet parking. Valet parking is a little bit of a challenge because it logistically has to work. I think the challenge for us is how could we get to a spot on the airport where we could park these cars? And when a customer comes back, where is that located, and how quickly can that car be retrieved for the customer? We don't have that figured out yet, but we have had lots of conversations with our parking management contractor. They do valet at a lot of different areas. This is something that we continually evaluate, and we will going forward, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions for Mark?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mark.
Now we have a presentation at AP. This is the budget.
I just asked Doug, my couple of comments, our Budget Director, Doug Dowler, to give us a couple of comments here. This is just a formal introduction of the budget, and he'll talk a little bit about our hearings that we still have coming.
Right. Last week, we distributed copies of the budget, made those available to you. Those are out on OKC.gov as well for citizens to view. What this item does is directs publication of the item, so that there's public notice about the budget, also sets the formal public hearing for June 4th, and sets our public hearings the next, next week, and then in three weeks. Next week, we'll hear from IT, Municipal Courts, Development Services, and Public Works. And then on the May 28th, we'll hear from Utilities, Parks and Recreation, Planning and Airports with their budget presentations, and then adoption is scheduled for June 4th. So be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Is there any other item that anybody wants to talk about? I've, I've exhausted my list. Okay, we do not have a motion on the table, so I could accept one, and I would deem it to not include item R3.
I'd move the consent items.
Okay. So motion on the table to move the consent items, except for the item on B1 that was stricken, R3, which we will handle separately, and item T, which was deferred. Any, and I need a second. Did I get a second? Anybody? Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing, seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Is there a motion for item 7R3?
I'll second it if I can also provide some comments.
No, you're not allowed to speak.
Yes, of course you can.
Before we make a motion on it?
Yes, yeah. Well, you've got a motion in a second, so do you want to, it's your ward. Do you want to talk?
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you, Mayor.
And then we'll get to council agreements.
You know, I talk a lot about Draper Lake. It's a, it truly is a gem, a underutilized gem in our city, I believe. And I think one of the things that really makes it special is when you go to Draper Lake, you feel like you're really at the lake. I mean, there's a lot of nature there. I mean, that's really all it is, is nature. The other two art pieces, I think, are going to be beautiful. They incorporate, you know, the one even has kind of an inclusion with Tinker Air Force Base, which is just to the north. The other one with wood and stone, I think, will be a beautiful enhancement to the trails. The third one, I just struggle with a little bit, being that it is so nature-filled. Coming around the corner and seeing a half-buried automobile, I just, I don't, can't, and I'm not a great artisan, but, and I appreciate everything y'all do, so please don't, don't take this any other way. I just personally have a hard time coming around a nature trail, whether I'm walking or biking, and seeing a half-buried car in what is a very, really kind of peaceful setting out there. So I'm going to vote against it. I just, I think it could be a neat piece of artwork. I just don't know that that's the specific place for it. And it's on the backside of Draper, which is the most remote piece that there is. So to me, it just, it does not kind of fit in in that exact location.
Councilman Greenwell?
Todd, just to give you a little bit of different perspective on, on, on this, the side of that vehicle with its front ends buried in the ground. In the old days, way old, when I was in high school, there were stories of students from South Oklahoma City Public Schools going out there, you know, to reflect back on the past year and, and as they were getting close to graduating, on the day before we broke for spring break, Friday. In fact, most students referred to it as Draper Day. And I know of stories of some students whose cars came very close to ending up like that because of their activities, you know? So I think it's, it depends on how you want to look at it. And granted, it is more remote than Hefner and even Overhouser Lakes, but it's, it's still somewhat of an urban lake, and I think you'll find a lot of people will look on, on that piece of artwork and perhaps reminisce about it in a favorable manner. So I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
And I'll just add, I'm, I'm looking at the potential of, of what could be, as we're hearing, how it could become more of a live piece of art, and how many more hands can actually be participants in that art and, and make it more of a, a setting to maybe you would be a little more comfortable with.
Evidently, I've got a lot of art at my place. I just need to get rid of it.
Councilman Cooper?
Yeah, two things. One, Councilman Greenwell, we had fairly similar experiences out in, yeah, I know, out in Toc-Tom, where I went to high school, the last day of school, we went to Thunderbird. And everyone drove there. I talked about biking to work today. Definitely had a Ford F-150 when I was in high school, though. Definitely had a Ford F-150 when I was in high school, though. And yeah, okay. And so, and then drove that out there. I mean, it was definitely something. And I know how those country boys like to drive their cars, and so I can imagine a lot of those sort of scenarios. But then to Councilwoman Nice's point, I've been reading Fahrenheit 451 with the Southsiders. And there's this beautiful ending, for those of you all familiar with it, or if it's been a few years, I'll remind you. But at the end, when the world is just being destroyed, and everyone's out in the woods, this kind of area, very similar to Draper, there's this beautiful passage in there from the grandfather, about this grandfather, who says that as we continue to move into cities and just build and build and build and develop and develop, and it's all metal and that sort of stuff, we would do well to remember nature, that one day, nature will have its revenge on us, and it will eventually encroach upon the urban in this way. And so then, when I think of Councilwoman Nice's point, and then I, point taken, by the way, about that car, what would happen if eventually we had vines and grass and stuff growing over that car? Or even with the art onto it? I'm just saying, like, I don't know. I just see potential there. I do understand your concern. I think that's very fair, but it just happens to dovetail with some stuff I've been thinking a lot about lately, reading that book with the students. I don't know. But I do understand. But Councilman Greenwell, I'll be darned if we haven't shared some pretty similar experiences.
All right. Councilman Mackey?
Is it appropriate to ask a question about that land deal with the driveway going through it at this point?
Well, we approved it already. Does that answer your question? I mean, okay. We're on item R3 right now, 7R3. Any other comments on that item? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to one. All right, we've moved now to the concurrence docket. Page 15, 8A through I, we could take it with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we are at items nine on page 17, items requiring separate votes. We'll start with 9A1. So these are going to be ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval at the Planning Commission. 9A1 is at 10901 North Midwest Boulevard, moving from AA to PUD 1711. Councilwoman Nice?
Well, I actually have the first five, so I'm going to keep my mic on. Ms. Francis, was there anyone to speak?
No one signed up, but the easement has been requested but not submitted.
All right. The applicant is here, so if you'll give us more information on that, please.
Mayor members, Council Brian Kuhn with you as always, representing the applicant. Do you want a small presentation on what's going on, or just the easement, or?
The easement's fine.
Okay.
With that addition, I will move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, 9A2, 4701 Northeast 1022, from PUD 1646 to PUD 1712. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, Ms. Francis? No one for this. And for this, I see no protesters, so with that, I will ask for approval.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A3, 222 East Sheridan, from the Bricktown Core District to SPUD 1086. And we do have Sandino Thompson, who has signed up to speak.
Good morning. Sandino Thompson, 1723 Northeast 19th Street. Mayor Holt, Councilperson's. I'm a Bricktown Design Review Committee member, a resident of Ward 7, and I'm adamantly opposed to the video screen billboard proposed for, to be placed on the garage on the side of Sheridan Street. We disapproved this proposal when it was presented to the Bricktown Design Review Board after a lot of discussion. It is, I think, an improper use of EMD signs. I think it has prompted some conversations about Bricktown maybe becoming the Times Square for Oklahoma City and that kind of thing. I think that's pretty inconsistent with the design ordinances, the historic overlay district, and the regulations that are in place for historic preservation. And Bricktown, I think it's a liable, likely to be a safety hazard in one of our most successful pedestrian districts in the city, as you have people constantly walking between Mickey Mantle, the Walnut Street Bridge, and Sheridan. This video billboard would essentially be a distraction for the cars that drive down Sheridan, for the cars that come over the Walnut Street Bridge. I think the billboard itself is not in keeping with the design guidelines. There are EMD signs and things of this nature that are allowed. You'll see that, sorry, when this came before us and came before the Planning Commission, city staff also not in approve, sorry, not supporting this proposal specifically regarding its size and its location and placement on the building. I don't think this has much of anything to do with the property owner's rights sort of being trodden on by government or any of those kind of things, which you may hear in their presentation. This building was built in 1998, after the design regulations were put in place, after tons of public investment in Bricktown by maps and things of that nature that we're all pretty familiar with. I think that Bricktown really does not need to become the Times Square for Oklahoma City. I've heard these sort of comments come up around these video boards, video billboards for advertising, things of that nature. I think there are other locations in Oklahoma City if we want to see those kind of things happen. And I think if it is the council's desire to move in that direction, then we should change the design guidelines. We should change those regulations. We shouldn't piecemeal, make these improvements to these variances and things of that nature to chip away sort of at the fabric of what's created the district in the first place. I would obviously hope that you all would vote against this proposal, and I thank you for hearing me this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Councilwoman Nice?
Thank you so much. I'm looking at the staff recommendations, and as you see, they don't constitute the committee decisions, but they are asking for denial on the basis that the project does not meet the regulations and guidelines of the Bricktown Core Development District zoning ordinance and the signed ordinance as referred in Section D of the staff report. So what I would like to do is, I'd like to defer this. Did you want to speak? Okay. I'd like to defer this for until our next council meeting on the 21st.
Our next non-budget council?
Non-budget council meeting, which I believe is the 21st. And I want to talk, sit and talk with the Bricktown Core Association, as well as the attorneys again, to see if we can come to some common ground with this, please.
Second the motion. Okay. Got a motion in a second for a deferral of item 9A3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item is deferred for two weeks. 9A4, 630 Southeast 15th Street, from R1 and R2 to SPUD 1100. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes. Are there, is there anyone to speak for this? Okay, with this, there were no protesters, so I will ask that we move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A5, 927 East Reno, going from I1 to SPUD 1107. Councilwoman Nice?
I'll be done for a little while after this. Is there anyone that requested to speak for this? This one is a permit for an assisted living facility, and I don't see any protesters. I believe this is the area, I kind of drove around. I want to, I want to look at this some more, if you don't mind. So I want to defer this one until the 21st as well.
Okay. Got a motion in a second for a deferral. Any further discussions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item is deferred presumably for two weeks. 9A6, 2928 Southwest 15th Street, going from R1, R2, I1, and I2 to SPUD 1108. Councilwoman Hammond, and it looks like we do have somebody who has signed, the applicant has signed up.
Okay, yeah, they want to come forward and?
Stanley Dobbs?
Stanley Dobbs?
Dobbs?
Oh, come on up and? Yeah. Did you have any comments you wanted to make on the application?
I'm sorry?
Did you have any comments you wanted to make on the application?
Yeah, we're just, we're trying to, we have an income coming off that for me and my family right now, and we're trying to preserve that until the project we're working on comes through. And we, matter of fact, the Supreme Court's supposed to hear it this week in DC, federal Supreme Court. If it does, it'll be a great enhancement to all of us in Oklahoma City. It'd be a nice project to create about 4,000 jobs.
Well, I don't see any protests, and it looked like there were some technical evaluations, but with those, I move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
9A7, at 818 Northwest 65th Street, going from R1 to SPUD 1109. Councilman Cooper?
Is anyone here to speak to this? Thank you.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an application that's been in a series of applications. Mr. Clay Farha is the developer. He has been amassing property in this area, and so the spud you see before you is the same regulations that we have put in place with several other SPUDs and a PUD that has been before Planning Commission and City Council. So we do agree with a portion of the technical evaluations on your memo. You'll see that some were negotiated at the time of Planning Commission. Again, this is keeping the same use units and overall development regulations that we have put in place for several other properties within this area. No protests and no other issues, to my knowledge. Planning Commission did recommend approval.
Yeah. So as I spoke earlier to the history of the Paseo, which I know very well, I'm curious, as I was driving around that area, is there, is there like a, is there a collective vision for what's going to happen over there? It seems like there's a mix of industrial, office, and then these older homes. Where are we at?
Right. So it's certainly an area in transition. You have a lot of it that is, Cindy, could you show the zoning map, please? No? When you look at it, a lot of it is still zoned R1. That's kind of a relic. I think everybody would agree it's not likely to develop as R1, considering it's abutting that very active railway. And so what you've seen over the last several years is the accumulation of property by Mr. Farha and others, and it is transitioning more to industrial. But really, what we have put in place for a broader area is more of a large-scale office-type complex. That, you know, it's a kind of under-served area in terms of office right there, along the railway, and it's just not likely to ever be reborn into any sort of residential development. So what you're likely to see is some form of industrial more likely on our site, some form of office. Now, 63rd up against the railway, it is actually zoned commercial. So you're likely to see some form of commercial right there along 63rd. But as you know, when you get back north of 63rd, roadway network isn't all the way improved, and so it's just not that likely that you're going to have retail or a commercial because of the lack of visibility.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9A8, 2823 Northwest 40th Street, going from R1 to SPUD 1111. Councilman Cooper? Highly-desired SPUD 1111. That's kind of a big deal.
Is there one here to speak to this week? Yes. Alan Brooks, Jolly Bird Designs, 1605 North Classen. I don't know if you guys have any questions. We're going from R1, single-family. It's a kind of a neighborhood in transition as well. There's some single-family homes, but there's also Sam's Club and a Take Five Oil Change on the corner and a Motel 6 across the street. I think at this point, we're kind of surprised that anybody wants to develop residential in any form on this lot. So we're multifamily dwelling. There's six units total. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm also a surprise, but encouraged, because I do know the history of Mayfair right around the corner. West Heights. Oh, sorry. Everyone can hear me here. Yes. No, I am very encouraged that there's development taking place there right now, that you all are doing this. You know, I know the history of Mayfair right around the corner there, Mayfair West on the other side, and those are neighborhoods that are really doing their best to, you know, be walkable and better connected and very pedestrian, bike-friendly. So I'm encouraged to see some, yeah, some development.
There's some adjacent lots that are also vacant, and we're kind of hoping that this kind of pushes those into the more residential development as well.
Yeah, you know, because I am, I heard your tone there a bit earlier. I share some concerns along I-44.
Yeah.
Right there. Especially because that's, you know, I love history, as you all are catching on to. Route 66 is, that's the old Route 66 right around there. And I see such potential for there, but also, it's a lot of place of panhandling, crime, drugs, and the good people of Mayfair Heights and West are doing everything they can. So whatever you all can do to be good stewards of that area, you have my support. And with that, I'd want to move approval.
Thank you.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 9A9, 13700 Southwestern Avenue, going from SPUD 491 to SPUD 1112. Councilman Greenwell?
Thank you, Your Honor. What we have here is an application for rezoning from an existing SPUD to a updated SPUD. It's a combination of office, commercial, development, just under five acres. Steve Buchanan is the developer. Steve does a great job with all of his developments. This was approved by the Planning Commission. There was no, there were no protests. Steve, would you like to say anything about this? Or, okay, well, I would recommend approval for this item.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Brings us to page 19 in your printed agenda. Item 9B1 and 2, these items are related to each other. One is the amendment to the master design statement to change the permitted use drinking establishments, sit-down alcohol permitted as being limited to an accessory use, et cetera. And then item 9B2 is an ordinance on final hearing. This was recommended for approval. 1629 Northwest 16th, going from SPUD 956 and Gateway Urban Conservation Overlay District to SPUD 1106. This was deferred from April 23rd. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yeah. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Selena.
The applicant.
Okay. Yeah, can you come and speak to some of the changes?
Selena has also signed up.
Oh, there she is. I was like, I didn't even see.
Are you repping her, David?
What's that?
Are you representing Selena?
No, we're working together. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. So as the mayor mentioned, this was deferred from the docket two weeks ago. What that allowed us to do was to get back with Selena, the folks in the plaza, and the other people that had concerns. We were able to meet with Mr. Teener, Development Services, as well as people in building permit. It was clear, I believe, that everybody was on the same page in supporting the proposed end-user here. It's a vintage arcade bar. It frankly feels like it fits in really, really well with the plaza, and I think the people in the plaza would agree with that. What they were concerned with was, would the spud allow some other end-user that they weren't as perhaps excited about to come in and possibly create problems? And so what we've done is, we've submitted a revised spud, which is what you were voting on pursuant to the amendment, dated May 1st. And I'll just go over briefly some of those changes, because your original packet's going to reference the old spud, not the revised spud. So what we did was, we further curtailed some of the screening, and so what you'll see on that eastern property line is a masonry wall for 20 feet, eight feet in height. Second, there'll be some screening on the second-floor patio. There was concern with the residential uses that still existed to the east, so there'll be some additional screening. But more importantly, what we did was curtail some of the square footage use that would be allowed for the drinking establishment, and further refined it with definitions to allow this user to operate. But hopefully, it's in such a manner that if something were to happen and they were to go out, the next guy that would come in wouldn't be able to have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. So what you see is, the accessory use unit is further limited, and so you couldn't have just a pure drinking establishment. It has to be an accessory use to one of the uses listed in the SPUD, and then again, It has to be an accessory use to one of the uses listed in the S P U D, and then again, further refine the square footage limitation. So, uh, with that, it's my belief that we have the support of, uh, Plaza. I did see a letter from, uh, Tyler Holmes, who's the president of the Gatewood Neighborhood, indicating his support as well on this version of the S P U D. What Selena is gonna, I believe, talk about is parking. Um, I think my client is, is fully supportive of parking, and one of the problems we have is, we can't provide on-street parking. We have a building that's built to the building line. Um, the angled parking would have to be in the city right-of-way, so it'd be a much longer discussion, likely require Traffic Commission, uh, review and approval. Um, again, we understand parking in the Plaza is kind of what it is right now, it's, it's a difficult, um, job. We're fully supportive of, of Selena, the Plaza, and what the city would like to do if there's a, a longer-term solution to that. So, um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. It is recommended for approval by Planning Commission, and again, we've made further revisions to the S P U D to try to get more in line with what, uh, Plaza and others, uh, desired.
Okay, thank you. Selena? Selena Skorman?
Hi, Selena Skorman, uh, seventeen fifty-one B Northwest Sixteenth Street. Good morning, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I am here just to let you know, or answer any questions you may have, but also to let you know that the Plaza Business Alliance wrote a letter, uh, in regards to the district as a whole, kind of a case study with this spud, and how our district is growing and in opening up a dialogue about that and parking and our boundaries. And I've delivered that to your offices, and I will also be emailing a soft copy, an electronic copy, uh, and so that was all I wanted to bring your attention to. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak a little further to this. Um, you know, obviously, given that this is another, uh, development that's happening outside the Plaza review boundaries, um, I think that's kind of where some of the longer conversations have been happening, to make sure that it really does fit, um, not just the Plaza businesses, but also since it is now right next to a hu, a single-family home, just making sure that the relationships with the, uh, surrounding neighborhood are also, um, developing well. Um, and then, yeah, speaking to parking, it does sound like it's a longer conversation, and I just wanna, uh, I know knocking doors, folks in Gatewood and Classen Tenpen, I got a lot of comments from the neighborhood about parking, um, you know, people parking on their lawn, you know, like coming up on their lawns or blocking their driveways, um, concerns about public safety with, um, being able to get emergency vehicles down the street, so I think this does, um, you know, warrant some further conversation about, um, you know, making sure that we have adequate on-street parking. Um, I don't think anyone would think that I'm an, an advocate of leveling anything to make any sort of additional, um, surface parking, but, um, I do appreciate the, um, the applicant working with the, um, associate, the District Association and the neighborhood to make sure that this is working for all parties. So with that, I move for approval.
Okay, I'm gonna consider that a motion for nine B one, the amendment to the master design statement.
Yes, fair enough.
We've got a motion and a second on that, so we'll start there. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then would you like to make a motion on nine B two?
Yes, I motion for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine C one and two are related to each other. Nine C one is an amendment to the master design statement to revise section four-point-four, et cetera. Nine C two is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at one-oh-four-oh-seven Broadway Extension going from P U D eight-seventy to S P U D one-one-one-zero. Uh, Councilwoman Nice?
Um, we do see the changes in your packet, and with that, um, I move for approval.
Okay, take that as a motion.
For C one, yes.
Yeah, for nine C one. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Also move for approval of C one, too.
Uh, nine C two, yes, got it.
Nine C two, thank you.
Got it. Uh, motion and a second. Any further discussions?
It's early.
Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to nine D one and two, uh, related to each other. Nine D one is an amendment to the master design statement. Nine D two is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at three-oh-one Northwest Hundred and Fourth Street going from S P U D seven forty to S P U D one-one-one-three. Councilwoman Nice?
As you see, Ward seven is busy.
That's great.
And, um, with that, we had no protests, and I don't believe we have anyone to sign up, so with that, I'll ask that we move forward, uh, with nine D one.
Motion and a second for nine D one. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
And please move for approval for nine D two.
Motion and a second for nine D two. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to nine E one and two, uh, these are, uh, also related to each other. This has been deferred a couple of meetings. Uh, nine E one is an amendment to the master design statement. Nine E two, uh, is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for denial at one-seven-six-zero-zero Southeast Hundred and Fourth going from double-A to P U D seventeen-oh-nine. Councilman Stone?
Thank you, Mayor. Francis, has anyone signed up on seventeen-oh-nine? Um, so I've met with staff on this, I've met with, uh, representative of the developer, I've met with the protester that shared his thoughts on it. Uh, actually wrote a great letter, but I've, I've talked to him on the phone a couple of times. Um, in meeting with all three of those, I think we've reached what I think will be a pretty good compromise on this thing. I'm not sure the order I should go in. What I need to do is be able to amend the T Es. Should we approve the one first, and then amend the T Es on two? And then approve two? Correct? Okay. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, E one.
Second. Okay. Do you need to weigh in? Okay. So nine E one, you've made a motion to, for the amendment to the master design statement. Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Okay, and then on nine E two, I need to make a motion to, uh, amend the T Es. Correct? And I'll trust that you guys will keep me straight on this, because we went around and around a couple of times. On T E one, we will strike the current language and change it to limited to a total of twenty-five lots. Uh, T E two would remain the same. That talks about the setbacks, uh, from the surrounding properties. Um, T E three, we will change to, uh, instead of a fifty-foot green belt, it'll be a twenty-five-foot, uh, non-disturbance area along all boundaries of the side at the plating stage. And then we will strike T E four, which is in regards to the street stubs.
Okay. David, did you, or Bob?
Yeah, the, with the approval of those amendments, we'll get a document, Francis, that reflects all those things. It won't be.
Kenny, do we actually take a vote on amendments to the T E?
I'm sorry. We haven't in the past, but you can.
Are the T Es sort of incorporated into the vote we would take on the ordinance on final hearing?
Yes. They're included in the motion for approval.
So, so, so that is the vote, then, on the T E amendments, essentially?
Right, so the, the first vote, I believe, did that, and the vote now is on the revised document that incorporates all of the items that Councilman Stone referenced.
Okay.
Because the document's been revised and submitted to the clerk's office.
Okay. So then you would make a motion on nine E two?
So I'm gonna make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on nine E two? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine F, ordinance on final hearing, recommended, this was recommended for denial, this has been, um, deferred twice. One-one-seven-nine-eight Southeast Hundred and Ninth Street going from double-A to P U D seventeen-ten. Councilman Stone?
Thank you. Before I defer this again, did Brian Hall sign up to speak on that? And did anyone else? I'm sorry.
Two people signed up to speak.
Alan Swartz.
Oh, and Alan, okay. Go ahead, if you all wanna come up and talk.
And you plan to request a deferral?
We are going to, yes.
So if that limits your comments, feel free to, to let it do so, but come forward.
I was, I was talking to Alan's wife yesterday, and I talked to Brian yesterday, and I let them both know I was gonna defer it, but.
Okay.
Um, they feel strongly enough about it, they wanted to come down here and share their thoughts with everybody, so.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Alan Swartz, eleven-six-twenty-five Southeast one-nineteenth Street. Uh, thank you for coming by and visiting my wife. It's my understanding she kept you out sweating in the sunlight for about an hour. So, I appreciate that. Uh, I just wanna make a couple of points that I didn't make at the last time, um, and that's that seventy-five percent of the Planning Commission has already recommended this for denial, uh, and also that there's been at least one other builder that's tried to buy this property to build on agricultural five-acre lots, which is right in line with the planned development that is already planned for the area. So, uh, again, I appreciate you coming by, but I'm still gonna ask that this be, uh, denied, that this zoning request be denied. So, thank you.
Thank you. Brian Hall?
Thanks for coming down. Thanks for coming down.
Brian Hall, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Sure, my name is Brian Hall, eleven-seven-oh-one Southeast Hundred and Nineteenth Street, Oklahoma City, Ward four, I guess, bouya.
He liked that? Liked that car?
Officially, officially, Councilman Stone's new nickname.
Yeah, thank you.
I would ask the police officers to start watch for the bullet holes to appear, anyway.
We can put one in your front yard, too. Beautiful.
I come once again to protest this rezoning of eleven-seven-nine-eight Southeast Hundred and Nineteenth Street, or also known as PUD seventeen-ten, from agricultural to residential. Please listen to the citizens of this community and your Planning Commission, who are saying to deny this request. Agricultural areas require five-acre lots. This is an out-of-town business that wants this property rezoned so they can put houses on two-acre lots instead of five-acre lots. How do I know? SWM and Sons has had a sign on the property for over a year. This rezon request is purely not the norm for this area. These are five-acre homes. Currently, the area is rural, low-intensity. The request will also change the area to rural, medium-intensity, which is not in line with the comprehensive plan. The rezon request does not conform to this comprehensive plan that you guys have signed. So why would you even entertain this idea? The area has no water service, no sewer, because it's rural. The property to the west feeds into the Upper Little River slash Lower Hog Creek watershed, a sub watershed of Lake Thunderbird. The master design statement is silent about the stream protection, so twenty-seven homes will be adding aerobic septic systems and twenty-seven water wells to this location, which is also a quarter of a mile from Lake Stanley Draper. Upland forest is present on the proposed development site. According to the Planning Commission, when ninety to a hundred percent covered in cross-timbered forest, the comprehensive plan has a preservation goal of sixty percent. The development proposal does not address tree preservation. Per the Planning Commission, numerous driveways connecting to the hilly roads may decrease their arterial functions. Per the Planning Commission, the proposed rezon to a PUD does not meet the purpose and intent of a PUD, and is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Let remind you of the zoning and planning code, fifty-nine dash eleven fifty. The purpose, item H, to promote the development of Oklahoma City in accordance with the comprehensive plan. So why do I tell you this? The Planning Commission has denied this, recommended denial to you. We, the citizens, are here telling you to deny this. As a retired military officer, I know better than to just come complain, but rather offer some solutions. My first solution? Deny this request. It's not in line with our comprehensive plan to build this city. Second option? If abiding by the comprehensive plan is not an acceptable option, then I've got about four tech T Es, technical evaluations, that we should levy. Keep all exterior lots to five acres in size to match existing home sites. Interior lots could be smaller. Combine slash join driveways on all exterior, exterior arterial roads. Require a twenty-five-foot green belt around the exterior lots and the roads to include Southeast Hundred and Nineteenth Street and Anderson Road. Enforce upland forestry requirements to match the agricultural zoning requirements. So there are some solutions going forward, not just accept this and move on, but it's everybody's decision here, and it's not in line with your comprehensive plan, so why would anybody else support this? Please listen to your staff, who believe this rezon should not be accomplished. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, and thanks for taking the time yesterday to visit with me out there. Um, I don't even know how long we were out there, standing in the sun. It was about an hour, hour and a half, I think. I think I got a sunburn, if I look a little red today. Um, it's interesting you brought up those T Es, because that's really what we kinda started discussing yesterday, was, um, and I shared with them the story of, what, the project that the Planning Commission saw, um, when it got to me, I mean, I immediately kicked back with Mr. Box and said, yeah, this isn't gonna work as drawn. Um, and that was before I knew there were any protesters on it. So, I mean, I have the same sentiment that you do. What I try to look for is, um, I try to look for somebody where they can still exercise their property rights, but we can minimize any impact to the surrounding neighbors. So when you talk about, um, you know, the shared driveways, uh, on the main arterial roads, that was something actually the developer came back with that I loved, because nothing I hate worse than seeing a driveway, uh, out in a rural area every, you know, hundred feet, hundred-and-fifty feet. So that was one thing that came back. Uh, we also talked about the twenty-five-foot green belt, um, especially on the frontage of those arterial roads. Both of their homes, um, and they're pretty close in proximity together, um, when you look at the distance, you know, they're on a hundred-nineteenth, but both of their homes, you can't really see the house from the street, uh, so it still leaves that rural feel. So that's kind of what we've been talking about. Um, I think there's still more work to be done there, to see if this project can be fleshed out. If it goes straight five acres, those T Es don't happen. None of that happens. They can go out there and bulldoze it, nothing we can do about it. So, part of that give and take is making sure that you end up out there getting the least impact to your property as well. So, with that, I'm gonna continue to work on it, and I'd make a motion to defer.
May twenty-first? Two thousand and twenty?
Yes, please. But, yeah, we'll, we'll try the twenty-first. I, I may end up deferring it again, but let's try the twenty-first.
Okay.
Councilman, um, and thank you all for coming. Councilman Stone and I spoke yesterday on the phone, and I really appreciate you working with them and hearing the stuff. I'm looking at the map here. I grew up, uh, at Fifteenth and Anderson. And the story I shared with, uh, Councilman Stone, in a lot of ways, I don't envy you this position becau, where you are, because, you know, you have all this, uh, desire for development. Just real quick, a, a story, you know, I, when I grew up out there, I was age five, nineteen eighty-seven, and we were the, one of the first dozen homes in Oakwood East neighborhood at Fifteenth and Anderson. And surrounding Oakwood East wa, were the woods, and in those woods were beaver dams. We found like a, a bridge, a giant beaver-constructed bridge, that us kids would go back there. Now, our parents didn't know we were back there, so, sorry, Mom, but we would go back there and we'd play, and the trees, the beavers had gnawed into pencils sticking out of like swampy land. And us kids, we felt like we had walked into Lord of the Rings or something, and we were also playing video games, too. We were a mixture of in nature and with our screens. By the time I was twelve, Oakwood East got a new addition next to it called Oakwood East Village. And then by the time it was done, over to about Post Road and Fifteenth, Oakwood East Royale. And now one of the saddest things in my entire life, top five saddest, is when I drive from Fifteenth and Post to Anderson, and where once that beaver dam was, is a concrete dam. Truly, I, I, it makes me want to start crying up here on City Council. And so I understand what you're saying. I am so concerned that on the periphery of our city, we're gonna keep having these spaces like where my parents built out there, because they're from Texarkana and Idabel, so that space made sense to them, they're more rural-type folk, you know? Um, but I'm worried that we're going to keep repeating that song of paving paradise. But I'm worried that we're going to keep repeating that song of paving paradise. I mean, that concrete dam, I cannot think of a more perfect metaphor for that. And I'm so happy that my memories still have those images in my head of the beaver dam. So I would just want that to be added. I've already spoke with Councilman Stone. I'm so thankful that you listened to me, and I'm so thankful you're working on these different compromises. I just wanted you to know that there are other people up here who are listening to your other council people and to you, who've grown up in a lot of these experiences, and we're trying to figure out what is the best way to square these circles. Again, I just really thank you for hearing me out.
Yeah. Okay. We have a motion for deferral to May 21st, 2019, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to item 9G, ordinance on final hearing, recommended, this was recommended for denial. This is at 4304 Northwest 23rd Street, from O2 General Office to SPD 1104. Councilman McAtee, and we do have somebody who has signed up to protest.
Thank you, Your Honor. Has the applicant signed up to speak, Francis?
They have not.
Is the applicant here today? Not seeing the applicant here. Let me make a comment and see if the protesters will go with this. The planning commission heard this particular case and voted to deny it. I'm also in favor of denying it, and so I'm going to make a motion in a minute to deny it. Would you still like to be heard, or will you accept my recommendation for denial or move forward?
I would gladly accept that.
Okay. Seems like everybody always is sitting in the last row.
In a very broad sense, what we've got here on Northwest 23rd Street is a zoning challenge. This street is, and this part of the street is not suitable for retail operations, which is what this zoning is, and we really would like to see it developed into a general office area in the years ahead. The city has already spent over $10 million on a streetscape to provide infrastructure to promote growth like that. So that being said, I move for denial.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Motion carries unanimously. The application is denied. Okay, 9H, ordinance on final hearing. This is recommended for approval. This is a special permit to operate a drinking establishment in the DTD2 Downtown Transitional District, 814 West Sheridan, Suites B and D. Councilwoman Hammond.
Francis, do we have anyone signed up to speak? And is the applicant here? I know we spoke a little bit on...
Yes, good morning, everyone.
Do you want to just speak a little to this application?
Yes. So, my name is Jose Rodriguez, 814 West Sheridan Road. I own Flashback Retro Pub and Sanctuary. When we first applied for this, it was a third concept that we're going to do. Through the process of that, we discovered some issues with plumbing that we're going to be a little bit more extensive than the budget that we had allotted for this space. So what we decided to do, this property or this space is directly next to Flashback Retro Pub. There's already a pre-existing pathway between the two places. So what we did, we're just going to expand Flashback Retro Pub into this additional space. So speaking with the zoning, they suggested we still continue on and get a permit, since alcohol would be possibly served in that area also.
Yeah, and it looks like Planning Commission recommended approval, so I'll also motion for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Councilman McAtee has stepped out. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Okay, we will now leave the planning part of the agenda. We're at 9I. We have an ordinance on, 9I1 is an ordinance on final hearing. This relates to the electrical code. This is the third and final meeting scheduled for consideration of this ordinance change. We had a presentation two meetings ago in a public hearing at our last meeting. I would entertain a motion for adoption.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We also have item 9I2, resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the National Electrical Code. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to 9J. This is an ordinance on final hearing. This is also the third of three meetings discussing this. There was a presentation two meetings ago, a public hearing at the last meeting. This relates to our alarm permits ordinances. I would entertain a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second?
Sorry.
Oh, sure. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
Yes, Steve Kreisner with the Municipal Counselor's Office. There is a change to the version you're adopting, is not going to include one provision in ordinance section 43-86.1. It erroneously referenced when the administrative fee would kick in. That's addressed in the previous ordinance in 43-86. So that's going to be stricken in the final version.
So Kenny, is that a Scrivener's error, or does that require an amendment, since this is different than the ordinance is introduced?
You probably want an amendment to strike the one provision.
Well, we will do that, then. We'll move to amend or strike that provision from the final version.
Do we have a motion on the table for adoption of the ordinance? We did, didn't we not?
Yes.
Would you mind withdrawing that motion?
I will withdraw that motion.
And would you like to make...
And I would make the motion, mending the ordinance to delete the sentence that gentleman just...
Understood. Francis cleans this up later. Okay, we've got a motion and a second for the amendment to the ordinance that was introduced. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Kenny, no further business on that? Okay, then we could do final adoption. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we are at 9K. This is a public hearing regarding ordinance related to drainage and flood control. Eric Winger did a presentation last meeting regarding this issue. And so today is simply an opportunity for the public to speak on it. If they wish, we'll have a final consideration of this, I guess, at a future meeting. Normally, that's noted here. Is this actually something we adopt later?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Does anyone wish to speak under the public hearing portion of item 9K regarding drainage and flood control? Seeing none, we will move on to, 9L was already deferred, so we are at 9M. This is an ordinance to be introduced and set for final hearing on May 21st, granting to Veolia Energy a revocable use, et cetera. I believe we maybe have a presentation on this?
Yes, Wiley. I'm sorry. Wiley Williams will give us a quick overview, just what this does for us.
Wiley Williams is Deputy Municipal Counselor. The ordinance before you today originates back in 1969, when Veolia's predecessor at the council considered whether to give them a revocable permit, and they decided at that time to do it by ordinance. And since 1969, that ordinance has been amended seven or eight times, and the exhibit to it is contained in all eight of those prior ordinances. So what we want to do is repeal all those old ordinances, create a new ordinance with a new Exhibit A that includes areas where Veolia thinks are going to expand in the future. That also includes expanding their services to the new convention center, which needs to be completed before October. And so at the next meeting, we'll bring back, the ordinance will come back. We might ask at that time to consider an emergency so that the construction can meet the deadlines.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Wiley? Seeing none. Motion to introduce the ordinance? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Actually, Larry is back.
Yeah. He just flipped.
Okay, got it. All right. Well, we're still in the vote, so why don't you flip her, too?
She turned hers.
Okay. Could you, since you're in the room? All right, we're all good to go. Passes unanimously. All right, moving on to 9N1. This is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures listed here, items A through G. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for 9N2, a resolution declaring that the structures are in fact dilapidated.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9O1, this is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structure listed here at 935 Northeast 17th. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion for the resolution declaring that the structure is dilapidated.
Resolution.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Got 9P1, a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures listed here, except for the ones that were stricken by the city manager at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I entertain a motion for the resolution at 9P2, declaring that the structures are unsecured.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9Q1, public hearing regarding abandoned buildings listed here, items A through K, except for items E, F, and G, which were stricken by the city manager. Anyone wish to speak under this public hearing portion? Seeing none, I entertain a resolution at 9Q, a motion for the resolution at 9Q2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9R, this is a resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust by the issuance of its commercial paper note series in 2019 in an amount not to exceed $350 million, et cetera. And I believe we might have a presentation on this.
Yes, Jennifer Arnt is here with Public Financial Management. She's a financial advisor for the Water Utility Trust. They also offer the city and for a couple other trusts, but she's going to give a quick presentation on the commercial paper program.
Great. So I'm Jennifer Arnt. As Craig said, I'm here with PFM Financial Advisors as financial advisor to the Water Utilities Trust to speak to you all about the trust's commercial paper program, which is being renewed and extended with the item in front of you. So we just wanted to give you some brief background information on the program, how it works, benefits the trust has received by using this program, and then just a little bit of details about today's action. The trust initiated this program in 2006 at a size of $75 million. As the trust capital program has changed in size, this program has changed in size. It's currently a $200 million program. The next step is what's getting started with today's action, which is to extend the expiring credit facility and to expand it in size to meet the trust's needs for the next five-year capital plan. So we wanted to give you a little background about how the trust uses this program. And at its heart, what it is, is an interim financing mechanism for the trust. So all of the trust projects must be awarded against an available source of funds. Instead of awarding them against revenue bonds that have already been issued, the trust can award projects against the commercial paper program. This allows invoices to be paid incrementally as they come in, and then as the credit facility fills up, it will be refunded with the issuance of 30-year revenue bonds. So what we really wanted to focus on were the benefits to the trust of using this program. So we put a little graph here for you all to see. So the taupe line at the bottom is an index, or an interest index that approximates the borrowing cost on the short-term facility, the commercial paper. And the blue line up top is the bond buyer's revenue bond index, which approximates the cost of long-term financing. So for the period in which these projects are being constructed, which can be up to a three-year period, instead of having carrying costs that are up at the blue line, the trust is able to have a carrying cost for the projects that are, you can see down much lower where the taupe line is. So it's achieved savings for ratepayers by lowering these carrying costs. It has really given the trust flexibility to separate the timing of the award of contracts and the timing of financing. So the trust has been able to hit some really advantageous times in the market, because they refund the bonds when the credit facility is full, and it's a good time for them to enter the bond market. And then they can award projects, and they don't have to worry about that bond timing. So what this gives the trust, the flexibility to do, is to keep really critical projects moving forward quickly and to award them on an as-needed basis based on the construction schedules. All right. So the last slide is basically just the details of the program as it exists today, and a little bit more information about what the program will be after it's renewed. So currently, commercial paper programs are required to have a liquidity facility underlying them. The trust facility is provided by State Street Bank, and that facility, without other action, would expire in July of this year. Long-term ratings, the trust is very highly rated, just like the city, a AAA rating from both Moody's and S&amp;P. The short-term ratings are relevant for this program, because it is a short-term security, and those are based on the ratings of State Street Bank. The scale's a little bit different for short-term and long-term ratings, but these are the highest ratings available from both Moody's and S&amp;P. There are a couple related parties who help with just the details of facilitating the program, and we've listed them as well. So the trust approved this program in April, and the item in front of you is the council approval for today. And the plan would be to close this program in June, so the trust can move forward with its capital plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. The use of this approach for funding has substantially lowered the borrowing cost for the Water Utility Trust, more so than we've seen in any other areas of the city. So I would certainly encourage us to approve this. The only potential downside, and we don't see this happening anytime soon, is if there is a steady increase in interest rates, and at some point, we may want to change this approach, if we wanted to lock in long-term rates that gave the appearance that they were going to significantly increase. But no indication of that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All right. Entertain a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Move the resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Six votes required to incur indebtedness, seven votes required to waive competitive bidding. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously with the required votes for all of the above. Okay. Brings us to 9S1. This is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal William Meadows while he continues to require rehabilitation, et cetera. I know of no need for executive session, so I'd entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second? Are we doing silent motions now? Motion and a second for 9S1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9T1, this is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, authorizing the firm of Collins, Zorn, and Wagner to represent municipal employees and Oklahoma City Police Officers David Storer and Bailey Hawkins in the case styled Cooper v. City of Oklahoma City, et cetera. Don't know of any need for an executive session. I'd take a motion.
Move the joint resolution.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9U1, claims recommended for denial. We have items A through Z. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Seeing none. I know of no need for executive session, so I'd take a motion.
Mayor, on C?
Yes.
I would like to see if we could defer that. I want to leave to that just a little further.
Okay. So you want to make a motion, start there, to defer that item?
All right, I make a motion to defer U1C.
Got a motion and a second to...
Yes, please.
To defer that item to May 21st, shaping up to be a long meeting. We, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Deferral passes unanimously. 9U1, we're still on. Items A and B remain. I'd take a motion to deny those claims.
Make a motion to deny the remaining claims.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're at 10, item 10, on page 27 of your written agenda. 10A1, claims recommended for approval, items A through E. I know of no need for executive session, so I'd take a motion.
Move the claims.
Got a motion to approve the claims. In a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to 11, items from council. We'll handle the business. Before we go around the horseshoe, item C was already deferred, which leaves us with items A and B. Item A is a resolution approving travel and reimbursement of travel-related expenses for Councilman David Greenwell to attend the Summit on Government Performance and Innovation in June. Six affirmative votes required for approval. Take a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and with the required number of votes. This brings us to 11B, ordinance to be introduced and adopted with an emergency, declaring a 180-day moratorium of the acceptance of applications for processing of and issuance of rezoning, building permits, and certificates of occupancy that would allow construction on or use of property in the 73111 zip code of Oklahoma City for certain retail sales of convenience goods or consumer shopping goods herein described as small-box discount stores, et cetera. Councilwoman Nice, this is your ordinance, so I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a grave concern for the community, and with this resolution, I'm asking for your assistance in helping me to make sure we have a more healthy community, and it starts with the restriction of small-box discount stores that are within the 73111 zip code that are encroaching and taking advantage of lower-income communities. And with that, there's less of an access of healthier produce, fresh fruits and vegetables. And there is a concern when we're looking at food deserts as well as mortality rates specifically in that 73111 ZIP code. So we do have a presentation from Mr. Wiley, and he's going to assist me, and then I'll have some more stats afterwards. Thank you.
Good morning. Wiley Williams, Deputy City Attorney. I come to you not only today on behalf of Councilman Nice to talk about food deserts, but also as a registered pharmacist with over 40 years of experience to tell you that food is the first and most important medicine that we can put in our bodies. And so from that viewpoint, I will start a discussion about food deserts. So what is the problem? The problem is that it's well-established that many Americans live in rural, minority, and low-income areas that are subject to food deserts. Evidence shows that their diets, when deprived of essential, healthy nutrients, create health conditions. And food deserts are a big problem for many Americans because they limit their ability to purchase and eat healthy and nutritious food on a regular basis. So what are food deserts? There's a dispute throughout the industry about how to define what is a food desert. The United States Centers for Disease Control defines it as a geographical area that lacks access to affordable fruits, vegetables, whole grains, low-fat milk, and other foods that make up a healthy diet. TheOklahomaCityPolicy.org, which is a nonpartisan, independent, nonprofit entity that provides factual information for fair and responsible public policy, describes it as an area without access to healthy and affordable food and indicates that the term is widely debated. One definition simply counts the number of grocery stores in a certain-sized area, while others, in addition to the counting the stores, consider the store's accessibility to the public, the affordability of the food that it carries, and the quality of the food that it carries. Food deserts have also been defined as areas with no or distant grocery stores and are generally found in neighborhood communities where residents, because of inadequate grocery stores, mainly purchase their foods at convenience stores or fast-food restaurants that sell items high in fat, sugar, and salt, which are not very good medicines to put in our Food deserts arise mainly in rural, minority, and low-income areas, but that is—but why they arise is because they often lack a supermarket. That's the number-one reason. They have large numbers of convenience stores or small-box discount stores where healthy foods are not as readily available. They have a high number of fast-food options. They are declining—they serve areas where declining populations. They have higher concentrations of retired employees with limited financial resources. And small grocers that try to establish their—in those areas often are not able to bring in affordable, quality, healthy foods. Food deserts are a big reason behind Oklahoma's poor health condition. As you know, we rate in the low 40s among most states in our condition and health of our citizens. Food deserts have been identified in 32 of Oklahoma's 77 counties, and there are more than one areas in Oklahoma City where food deserts exist. In the food deserts with typical low neighborhoods or income neighborhoods, they—nationally, 30% of the super—they have 30% fewer supermarkets than is found in more affluent neighborhoods. In Oklahoma, most food deserts arise in areas of high poverty, but there's also evidence that there's higher unemployment in those areas. They have lower household assets. They contain certain demographic characteristics such as age and race. They have decreasing or aging populations, and they have a loss of grocery competition because of the impact of the small-box discount stores. According to the United States Department of Agriculture, in America, 40 million adults live in food-insecure households, which are typically found in food deserts. Another 9.7 million hover on the edge of being unable to afford even basic nutrition. And nationwide, more than 500,000 children live on the verge of hunger daily. In Oklahoma, 15.5% of Oklahoma households experienced some form of food insecurity during 2015, and our rate in Oklahoma is higher than the national average. So what are the consequences of food insecurity? Children, for one, face poorer health and lower academic achievement. And the hunger that's caused—it creates—the hunger that results from food insecurity increases illness and decreases academic achievement, and according to Hunger Free Oklahoma, costs Oklahoma more than $1.5 billion a year. There's a consequence for our health. Through deserts, we find exacerbated chronic illnesses such as kidney disease, hypertension, diabetes, and obesity. And in utero and in the first three years of life, food insecurity causes low birth rates, developmental delays, and decreased language acquisition among children. In education, children who are hungry have lower reading and math scores. They have more significant behavior and social problems, and lower high school graduation rates. There's an impact, cause, on the economy because food deserts create a weakening labor force, decrease human capital and educational skills, and increase healthcare costs, undoubtedly. The regional food bank of Oklahoma in its Oklahoma—eastern Oklahoma and Tulsa area has reported that of their consumers that they serve, 33% of the households have a member with diabetes. 57% of the households have a member with hypertension. 24% have a member in poor health. 63% have medical bills to pay. 32% of them have no insurance, health insurance. 83% report purchasing the cheapest, not the healthiest, foods available, and 83% had to choose between food or medicine. The Oklahoma City County Health Department, in regard to ZIP code 7311, which is the principal area that I think Councilman Nice is going to address with her ordinance, provides that the stroke mortality in that area is 85.6 per 100 population. The heart attack—that's the number of people—the percentage of people dying with a heart attack at 43.7 per 100,000. Diabetes at almost 80% per 100,000. People with hypertension dying at 80.4% per 100,000. People dying with prostate cancer at 13.7 per 100,000. So are there benefits to reversing food deserts? Of course, there'll be a dramatic increase in the cost of health. A Massachusetts study—to demonstrate this, a Massachusetts study of adults found a 10.7% decrease in the risk of obesity in ZIP codes that had one or more supermarkets. So if you can decrease obesity through a supermarket, you'll improve health. And a 2017 study found that the federal food assistance programs such as SNAP, which is a supplemental nutrition access program, reduced the likelihood of hospitalization for seniors by 14% and cut the likelihood of nursing home admission by 23%. Those are significant decreases created when you can give people the right food that they need. So what are the impact of small-box discount stores? Across the country with no local supermarkets, many families have limited options and therefore have to do their shopping in these convenience stores, which are typically stocked with overpriced, highly-processed fatty foods with low nutritional values. Staples such as milk can cost dollars more per gallon than in a supermarket. And it's not easy to buy fresh fruits and vegetables in ZIP code 7311. There's one moderate-sized grocery store in that area, but more options are needed. Residents in northeast Oklahoma City have, for many years, voiced concerns about the cost, quality, and quantity of healthy groceries in northeast Oklahoma City. In the northeast quadrant, there are currently four Family Dollar stores, One Dollar Tree, and one proposed Dollar General store. These small-box stores do not typically sell fresh vegetables, fruits, or meats, yet they are often the closest and most convenient location to many of the northeast Oklahoma City residents. I looked into paper this weekend at one of the ads by one of these small-box discount stores. There's not a single advertisement for a banana or an apple, but there's all kinds of ads for potato chips, honey buns, and things like that. There is evidence that these stores are causing some full-size grocery stores to close in other parts of the country. The continued proliferation and strategy of saturating communities with multiple outlets are making it difficult, if not impossible, for new grocers or supermarkets to take root and grow. Reports from local grocers and other communities claim that a typical—it's typical for sales to drop about 30% after a new small-box store opens. And as you're probably aware, margins in grocery stores are generally so thin that a 30% drop in revenues can certainly cause the store to close. So what are the solutions? The evidence is pretty convincing that the availability of a supermarket offering affordable, healthy foods, and sufficient quantity would be the primary goal in all food deserts. Because by doing that, you reach the most people, you have the greatest impact on health, and—but grocery stores are just one of the options. There are temporary stopgap measures that could be considered, but we're not presenting those to you as part of today's presentation. But they are not a permanent solution to food deserts. The solution today is a dispersal ordinance, which is designed to spread out the proliferation of small-box discount stores and increase the diversity of retail operations and develop convenient access to fresh meats, fruits, and vegetables. And Amanda Carpenter is going to go over the ordinance with you.
Hi, Amanda Carpenter, Deputy Municipal Counselor. A small-box discount store is defined in this ordinance as a store with retail sales of convenience and consumer goods, including food and beverage for off-premises consumption, household products, personal grooming, and other health products. These stores have a floor area of less than 12,000 square feet. They continuously offer a majority of the items that they sell for less than $10 and do not include a pharmacy. Per the ordinance, the moratorium is a step to remedy the food desert that—we are in an effort to avoid proliferation of those small-box discount stores. The promotion of health, safety, and welfare of the residents provides that the ordinance would have a 180-day moratorium on the application for processing of or issuance of any rezoning, building permit, or occupancy permit. This would allow staff to prepare planning documents for additional zoning, which would provide a healthy neighborhood overlay district. Tulsa has recently done this in 2018. The healthy neighborhood overlay district would provide for certain measures, including the distance of small-box discount stores as they go in, as well as requirements for fresh food components. This moratorium does provide an appeals process for any property owner that would be affected. They would bring an appeal to the Planning Commission, who would make a recommendation to this body, and an exception could be approved for good cause. It also provides for small-box discount stores to be able to go in so long as they're not within one mile of each other, or if they're willing to provide 500 square feet of retail space for fresh food—not packaged, but fresh meats, vegetables, and fruits. So it does still provide for small-box discount stores to come in just in a very detailed and measured way, and providing those fresh food options, which is the goal of this moratorium and ultimately would be the goal of the planning rezoning that we would be proposing as far as the overlay district.
And thank you. Want to thank Mr. Wiley and Amanda. Thank you for your dedication to this and helping me. Now, I want to give you a couple of things, as you heard in this presentation. Hunger costs Oklahoma $1.5 billion a year. That's a lot of money for the state. And when you heard about how many stores we have within the northeast area, I want to single that just to the 73111 ZIP code. We have one grocery store to $3 stores in a Dollar Tree. So all of those options compared to one grocery option. And that's just in the 73111 ZIP code alone. And northeast Oklahoma City—and this is according to the Lynn Institute study of northeast Oklahoma City of 2016—northeast Oklahoma City has the highest morbidity rate in every major disease in comparison to other Oklahomans. And obesity and smoking rates are higher than Oklahoma and also in the nation. There's a significantly lower life expectancy, as it points out in this ordinance, at least 5.9 years shorter, and more people purchase food items outside of northeast Oklahoma City than within. And some health outcomes from this study. 89% of respondents said that, in general, northeast Oklahoma City is not a physically, mentally, or healthy community. So imagine people who are responding in their own community saying that they do not feel that it is a physically, mentally, or healthy environment for them to be in. And these are things that we can respond to as a city council. And again, as we look at just that 73111 ZIP code, as I mentioned, that one grocery store, we have 22 restaurants, including fast-food options, 13 gas and convenience stores, and again, the highest obesity rate. All cancer mortality is greatly increased in just that ZIP code alone, and breast cancer is two times higher in 73111. As far as our focus groups from this same study, the same theme was said in that, and its healthy food is not available, there are no groceries or fresh foods. And the questions, when asked, what would help the people in northeast Oklahoma City consistently eat nutritious? Their answers: access to fresh fruits and vegetables. More healthy food choices at restaurants and grocery stores. More grocery stores. Available fresh fruits. Additional stores that carry fresh and inexpensive produce is needed. Access to fruits and vegetables. Better grocery stores with choices and education. When asked, what do you think is the case specifically for the northeast Oklahoma City community for access and nutrition? The comments were, there's no access. No access to healthy food. No resources. Bad eating habits. Additional help is needed. Community is ignored. Poor diet. Fast food. When asked, what would help the northeast Oklahoma City consistently eat a nutritious diet? More grocery stores. Education. Access to fresh food. And better access. So please, remember these things, and also, as grocery stores leave, so do other independent businesses within that same community. In small-box stores, also, when we're looking at the economic development piece, they only have an average of eight to nine people on staff compared to independent stores that employ an average of at least 14 people. And you're going to have local shoppers at the end of the day when it comes to being able to provide those fresh options. So I'm not asking for this to be continuous. I'm just asking for us to have 180 days to look at this, to discover what we can do as far as that just one particular ZIP code is—which is one of the most affected ZIP codes when we're looking at healthy food options. And again, one of the highest mortality rates when it comes to not having access to those health options. And we just got—in last year or the year before, they just broke ground and opened that Health—Community Health Centennial Healthcare Center, because that was also a concern for the community about access to healthcare. So we've addressed that, and it's a holistic approach, so we need to make sure we're addressing this food option as well. So I do ask that we consider the resolution today. We pass this resolution, and we also— We pass this resolution, and we also establish an emergency where we can make it effective immediately so we can help to care for the concerns of the Northeast community in the 73111 zip code. Are there any questions?
Anybody who would like to make a comment?
With that, I would ask for approval of this resolution for 180 days.
So you want to put this in place right now rather than get input from the neighbors, from the citizens?
I would like to get input from the citizens, also from planning about the Healthy Neighborhood Overlay option for this particular zip code. And also, we're waiting on a study right now from our grocery consultant. So I would like to see what all of that looks like together in totality as we move forward with receiving and getting and attracting an adequate grocery store.
Okay, and this motion would put this ordinance in effect right now?
Please.
Okay.
But you'd have to vote separately.
Yes, you have two votes on it. You vote on the emergency separately, and since this is a moratorium, it has to be adopted with the emergency. So you need seven of the eight people here to vote for the emergency.
So we need to vote on the emergency first?
No, you vote on the ordinance first and then the emergency, right.
So with that, I ask that we move the ordinance forward.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the ordinance forward. Any further discussion or comments? Okay. Seeing none, please cast your votes. Okay, and the ordinance passes. Now, what do we need to do next?
Move the emergency.
Okay, we need a motion to move the emergency.
Okay, I also ask that we move the emergency for 180 days effective immediately.
Okay. We have a second. Any comments or questions? Please cast your votes. And again, passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, counsel. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
So next, we're ready for city manager reports. Oh, we need to, we, items for council. We'll start with James. Seeing none? All right. Now we'll move to city manager.
I had something briefly.
Yeah, we do too.
Just briefly.
I do too.
Oh, you had one.
No, I'll let you go. Yours will probably be shorter.
Yeah, just briefly, Your Honor. I wanted to thank Councilman Cooper and Councilwoman Nice for coming to Ward Eight on Saturday and taking a tour of my ward. A lot of great questions. It made me think outside the box and think of new ideas and new ways to do things. And so we took a tour of Ward Eight that started in Quill Creek, who was having a showcase of their homes, and we were able to see one of the homes that was a part of the parade. And so it was a great experience, great questions, and I hope we do that soon in other wards. Thank you.
And for me, I wanted just to make mention, obviously, and I know with Councilwoman Hammond, I'm sure she screams for this, it's, I just wanted to recognize Mental Health Awareness Month, and also recognize Heartline for the wonderful work that they do. And you can find more information even about them on our OKC.gov website. Also, to the municipal clerk's office, thank you for all you do in keeping us in order. We appreciate that. So I wanted to make sure we recognize you all as well. And Saturday, we had Sound the Alarm with the American Red Cross at Schilling Park, and there were so many volunteers. And one gentleman stopped me yesterday and said that his group alone installed about 17 smoke alarms. So we are very appreciative of those efforts of the community. And Martin Luther King had Elementary Career Day on Friday, so we had a lot of our public safety officials out, as well as many questions and concerns from our youngest constituents about sidewalks and potholes. So that was great to hear from them. Ralph Ellison Library, I wanted to mention that because they are closed right now, but it's for a good reason, because they're getting a facelift. They're getting new flooring, carpet, furniture, and side chairs. And I know the community is so excited about what's to come, and they are scheduled to open June the first, but they are hoping that it may be a couple weekends before that. Also, want to send our thoughts to young man Isaiah Lewis's family. And the One OKC event, if you hadn't heard, is going to be on May 18th from 12 to 4:00. We want to see you on Northeast 23rd Street. And I wanted to mention something about when it comes to, I know I mentioned this last week, we talked about diversity, but again, I want to make sure that we're being very intentional when it comes to our staff and our upper management and developing leaders when it comes to those opportunities. And also, when it comes to choosing and making sure we have a police chief, that we have transparency, we have people at the table. And I would like for us to actually consider having an open forum where the community can get a hold and just a grasp of who these candidates are. It's been done in Little Rock, and they ended up getting the chief of police from Norman, Oklahoma. And that was with the community just being engaged and involved and actually sitting, asking questions of all of those candidates. And I think that's something that we should explore in doing the same thing here, especially when it comes to community policing and making sure we're having openness when it comes to community policing and continuing that culture of community policing for the city of Oklahoma City. So I think that's something we should consider and also adopt as far as when it comes to selecting a police chief. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. And I understand we've already gone around the whole horse.
I do actually, Councilwoman Nice, mentioning Mental Health Month also reminded me, I know we mentioned it earlier, but it is Bike Month, National Bike Month, and there is a group, a community group, who is hosting a few events in the coming weeks around recognizing people who have died while walking or biking in our city. Particularly tonight, there will be an event outside the Tower Theater from 4:00 to 6:00 with, I think it's 78 seconds of silence to recognize people who have died in the last three years. And I want to thank Deputy Baldurama for helping pull that information for us to recognize that the people who are dying by being hit by cars while walking and biking due to inadequate infrastructure are individuals that had lives in our community, contributed to the community, and likely, not all, but likely, most of them had no other options for transportation. So they were getting to work, going to school, and so I just appreciate that community group and would invite anyone to attend and participate in that, to get to know and hear from the folks involved, what we can be doing better as a city to improve that. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, items from council? All right, well, that brings us to item 12, City Manager Reports.
So we have the presentation of the third-quarter report from Mike Carrier, Executive Director of the Commission of Visitors Bureau.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Council, it's good to be here with you again. Considering the hour and time you all have spent in here today, I'll move quickly, but happy to answer any questions. Through three quarters, we are showing good results. You all have the report in front of you. We are, we're right where we should be with our expenses in terms of our budget. The one thing that does appear to be low is our event sponsorship spending, which is money provided to organizations that are producing events in the city. That's a timing situation. A lot of events that occur in the spring have not submitted their required accountability information, and so until that comes in, we cannot award them any money. We are at approximately 66% of our goal in terms of definite future bookings. Again, that is somewhat of a timing issue because March, April, May, and June are four of the major months in terms of conventions and meetings, and when a lot of decisions are made for the location and timing of future events, a lot of work is done over the winter gathering information, and then when organizations have their annual meetings or spring meetings, they have a board of directors meeting, that's when they make their decisions. To go along with that, however, we've conducted 27 site visits, groups that are interested in Oklahoma City as a future location for a meeting. We have been involved in a number of different events, significantly, a number of sports events that have occurred over the winter in the third quarter with a lot of the high school events, as well as other activities. This week, the Big 12 Women's Softball Tournament will be played at the softball complex. It's going to be an interesting event in that, because the Hall of Fame Stadium is under construction, we're playing the tournament on two of the backfields, and it's a little more challenging to get to. But USA Softball has been extremely cooperative, working with us to make sure we can get people in and out safely and conveniently. Couple of weeks, we've got the Big 12 Baseball Tournament coming up. Again, will be a great activity in Bricktown. Looks like the Cowboys and the Sooners are both playing pretty well, and so hopefully we'll see them go a long way in this and bring more people through the turnstiles. And then right after that, the College World Series. And I bring that up because that is going to be played on Hall of Fame Stadium Field. And again, will be a bit of a challenge because of the construction, but USA Softball, the contractors are working very hard with us to make sure, and with the NCAA, I should say, to be sure that people can get in and out of the stadium quickly, safely, that it is a good environment, looking, and we're doing some things to help people look forward to next year when the stadium will be almost complete, not quite, but almost complete. We've also, over the course of these last several months, identified 42 new opportunities for conventions and meetings that are interested in our new convention center. We are getting a tremendous reception on that. We're constantly having people in. We just had a group in this week, convention for 2024, or last week, rather, I should say. They are making a decision in June. And so, you know, we're seeing a lot of good interest in that. We've traveled to 23 trade shows, 49 leads, 374 prospects. Our equine business is extremely strong. We've lost a couple of shows this year, as shows come and go for a variety of different reasons. One of those shows, literally the day it was announced that they were leaving Oklahoma City, we got a phone call from somebody that wanted those dates to do the same discipline of show. And in fact, it looks like it may indeed be even a larger show in terms of the number of participants for us over that time period. So we continue to, there's only 52 weeks in the year, so, you know, the calendar for horse shows is pretty full, and we continue to keep beating that drum out in the industry and in the community. Tourism sales, fourth quarter is always our high-water mark for motor coach traffic as well as leisure tourism. And so we are, we feel really good about what's going on there. Great participation, great partnership with our attractions all throughout the community. Our marketing communications, website traffic continues to increase. We keep wondering how long that's going to grow, but it continues to grow, and we're delighted to have it that way. We're also seeing a lot more stories being printed and used either in magazines, social media, blogs, et cetera, with travel writers and journalists. So we're very excited to see what's happening there. We are looking forward to a good fiscal '20. You all had in your consent agenda today the receipt of our marketing plan and budget request for next year. At the appropriate time, whenever that is, I'll be happy to visit with you on any questions you might have in that, but we're hard at it, looking forward to what's going on next year. We have a robust calendar of events in terms of trade shows that we'll attend, once again talking about the virtues of Oklahoma City, and being able to show people updated photographs and images of the convention center, the Omni, Scissor Tail Park, all of the other amenities that we now have and that will be coming online. And so one of the nice things about the shows that we do is we can continually update our materials and show people the latest and greatest things that are going on here so that we don't have to just tell them that it's under construction, we can show them. So be happy to answer any questions, but do appreciate y'all's support of what we do and look forward to finishing out this year strong and having a good next year.
Any questions for Mike?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do, Mike. Appreciate you.
So next up, we have Eric Winger with a presentation on streetlights. We also have Melina Moffett here with OG&E to assist with the presentation.
Thank you, Mary, and counsel. I think as we come back today, our last presentation on the status of streetlights in Oklahoma City was at the end of March, and so there's been considerable progress. There's been a lot of partnership and furthering partnering with OG&E and OKC that have been created. One of the other things that we left the meeting last time was committing to a weekly meeting, which we've held, which has really helped expedite a lot of the repairs, and I can show you a lot of that work today. We're going to break up the presentation into four parts. We're going to talk about the OG&E lighting, the city project 180 lighting, an update on copper theft, and then also some really big changes on how you can report streetlight outages in Oklahoma City, and OG&E is going to be able to provide that part of the update today. So as we look at OG&E and city and highway street lighting, these are just to give you some of the totals from what was presented about a month ago. So you may recall, there are over 26,000 lights that are in the Oklahoma City system, 8,000 that are actually city-owned but also OG&E maintained. Those would typically be our highway lights, and so there's generally 34,000-plus lights in Oklahoma City that span our interstate highways, that are on our bridges. This also includes a lot of the residential lighting that's throughout the city as well. The OG&E lighting is installed by OG&E, maintained by OG&E. The highway lighting, if you recall, is installed by the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, owned by Oklahoma City, but it's also maintained by OG&E. But we do have the P-180 lights that are strictly the city's lights, city-owned and city-maintained. And so we really rely on OG&E's partnership in actually maintenance-ing the majority or the vast majority of the lights throughout the city. So since our last update, we actually showed some lists that had more than 20 projects that we had areas of Oklahoma City that were without light. Majority of these were due to wire theft. There were some just due to regular outages. And of that list of more than 20, 21 repairs have been completed. There's three that are generally remaining, but we do have one new wire theft location that was at Interstate 240 and Interstate 35 that we're now actively addressing.
So Eric, go back to that slide. So these are, you're saying, I mean, these are kind of areas. Obviously, we're not talking about 21 streetlights, we're talking about...
So it's 21 areas.
Yeah, significant stretches, 21 different stretches where, and this is all along highways in this case?
This is predominantly all highways or highway bridges.
Okay.
So this does not include all the residential locations. So there's a separate tracking that OG&E does for their work orders on all the non-highway lighting as well, but that has not been a part of our updates thus far.
Okay.
So when we look at this map, and we've tried to add a little bit more detail, but obviously, Interstate 35 runs north and south up the middle of the page, and then you can clearly see Interstate 40 and I-44. This map, when we presented this a little over a month ago, had a lot more red lines and a lot more red dots that are on there. And we're rolling down to two key locations. There's a section of lighting on Interstate 35, just south of Interstate 40 that is currently out. That's one of the major sections that's still remaining. There's also a section of Interstate 40 that is out. And then we have two bridge locations that are without service right now. What's making these final repairs complicated is that we're actually having to work with ODOT to close some lanes of traffic on the highway to affect the repairs. So all the other work has been able to be done without highway lane closures. But we're working actively with them. OG&E is doing the same. And so pending repairs in these locations, on this next slide, we'll actually give you the specific locations that you'll see here, and some of the work is still being performed by the city. So when we talk about damaged infrastructure, we talk about wire that's stolen and some of the piping or the conduit and the boxes are broken, that is where the city is still assisting OG&E on those repairs so that they can come back in and actually rewire and relamp those systems. And so this list, again, is just much, much shorter than the one that we presented at the end of March, and we're working very diligently to have no list very soon. This is a reminder that there are some projects that may be thought to be lighting outages, but they're actually temporary outages due to construction, and so ODOT has a number of projects that are under... of projects that are underway, and this is just that reminder that at I Forty-four and I Two Thirty-five, the lighting is out on purpose. It's been temporarily discontinued due to construction of the new interchange that's at that location. Specifically, also at I Two Forty and I Thirty-five, there's some lighting outages there due to that interchange. And then there's still some remote locations, especially along the west portion of the Boulevard, that are being restored by ODOT, have not been restored yet, but that lighting is also part of an active construction project. Those will come onboard just as soon as ODOT's complete with that work.
I noticed on a previous slide, it looked like you had I Forty as it crosses downtown as an open project. Is that now, because I kind of previously got, been under the impression that was still under ODOT's control, is that now ours?
So there's actually two pieces. If we were to go back two slides, you'll see that there's one more forwards. So you'll actually see here that Interstate Forty from I Forty-four to I Thirty-five, we have some wire that was stolen, it's a very top item on this list, and so that, that is a partial ODOT project, but there is actually work that's being done as a part of what we're working on today.
So you're partnering with ODOT even, it's still technically theirs, but they're letting you fix it?
There's possibility that portions of that's theirs, I think OG&E is assisting in that as well.
Okay. And that's where a wire incident occurred?
This was a stolen wire incident at that location. The west end of the Boulevard is also a stolen wire incident that is not specifically showing up on this because it is one of the active construction projects, but ODOT is making that repair. So if I were to affect, I mean, there's a lot of partnering between the entities, making sure that this gets fixed without trying to make it too confusing about which party is responsible. Obviously, the restore, restoration of the lighting in Oklahoma City is a, is a top priority. So we had also discussed the schedule at the last meeting at the end of March, and one of the commitments that was made is that by the end of September, by the end of summer, that we would have those lighting repairs completed, and I would report to you today that from an OG&E response and from the infrastructure repairs, we're on track to make that happen. Obviously, we've made a huge improvement in the list, there's some coordination with ODOT, and then this is just a reminder that ODOT construction projects will not be finished by the end of the summer. Those are active projects that are actually going on through the summer of two thousand twenty, so if we're going to go and discuss more about the I Forty-four, I Two Thirty-five, or the I Two Forty, I Thirty-five, those projects are ongoing construction projects. They simply install the lighting as one of the last components of those projects, they're doing a lot of heavy construction with new piers, lots of new site work, grading and drainage, and it's just not possible for them to have the lighting active at the same time they're doing the heavy construction. The other lighting that we had updated is the P One Eighty lighting, which is predominantly our downtown lighting system. This is city-owned and city-maintained, and so there is some partnering with OG&E that occurs where we actually receive the service from them, but the actual maintenance of the lights is completely a city responsibility. This is a summary of those lighting totals, and so this is a typical light that you see on the right-hand side of this page. And you'll notice that it does still have the two components, and we talked about the city's street lighting, which is the light at the top of that pole, and then we have some pedestrian lights. The update that I would provide to you today is that of a hundred and sixty-nine total streetlights that are in our P One Eighty system, there's ninety-eight replacement parts having been received with twenty-four of those conversions complete to date. So there's a gap. We actually have some hardware that we have in our shop that's ready for installation, and we're just finding that city crews are having a little bit of difficulty keeping up with the workload. One of the big changes that we're making is that we're going to be adding additional contracting crews to assist in that conversion and getting those extra parts installed as quickly as possible. On the pedestrian lights, there's a hundred and fifty-eight total, but we've only received thirty-eight replacement units with thirty-seven of those installed. One of the items that has come to our attention from the manufacturers, that they're having some manufacturing difficulties, there's some parts and components that go onto those new LED boards that is not available currently, and they're waiting on their own orders to be delivered. So I suspect that we may have some lighting delays. I'd like to make a full commitment that these could be done by the end of summer and September on those lower lights, but it's possible we may be waiting on some manufacturer parts. But it looks like the streetlights, the ones that are at the top of the pole, will be fully restored. We should eliminate the dark areas of downtown, even with the pedestrian light maybe not being fully restored. So since our last update, we're going to be engaging additional contractors. These are some of the contractors that have already worked on a lot of our P One Eighty projects, its traffic and lighting systems, but then I mentioned the manufacturing delays and some of the production of some of the replacement parts that we're working on that schedule now. This is a map of our downtown, gives you an idea of the extent of the P One Eighty lights. On the bottom of this drawing is Reno Avenue, the top where the color stops is Northwest Sixth Street. On the east or the right side of the drawing is E.K. Gaylord, and on the left-hand side is Lee Avenue. So that's generally the area that we have our Project One Eighty lighting installed. Everywhere that is in green, which includes Couch, portions of Walker, portions of Harvey, and also Hudson, those are the areas that we've already restored that lighting, the areas that are brown are the areas that are remaining. But again, we're going to be making a strong push to have those completed as soon as possible. And this is that repair schedule, so the pedestrian lights, the streetlights, and the overall construction, I mean, we are targeting a summer completion based on availability of parts. On the copper theft update, there's been a lot of progress in this area as well, and I would report to you that there's been significant improvements. Even though we reported today that there's been one new copper theft location, we were reporting numbers of locations at our last meeting. And these are the totals on the next slide of what was occurring in February, March, and then April. And you'll see that there were a lot of investigations, some focused investigations where they were doing some undercover work and some things to truly, really try to get into and figure out where the issues were. I mean, you'll see that there were thirteen of those focused investigations in February. You'll see that number reducing in March and slightly increasing in April, but I think you're going to see that the number of violations has dramatically decreased once those initial investigations were underway just a couple of months ago. So in April, there were some, there were seven focused investigations, one violation, and then the one report of new wire theft, but obviously significant improvements in reducing the amount of theft that's occurred in the city in just a few short months. And that, again, is our appreciation going out to the Oklahoma City Police Department for coordinating those efforts.
When you talk about investigations and violations, you're generally talking about the metal recyclers, right?
Yes.
That kind of thing, yeah.
Yes.
We still haven't caught anybody like in the act of stealing copper at the light, right?
Yeah, I can't, I can't report there, I don't know that today. I think that they have made some, there have been citations issued, so they have, they have caught individuals either purchasing or other illegal activity with the wire. The, we talked a little bit about some of the changes in the wiring. One of the things is that the new stickers that had been talked about, where we're actually reporting now and placing these on, the new installations, that aluminum wire is installed, this is a sample of that sticker that you see there. These are in the process of going out into the field to try to help deter additional theft of wire. There's also been nearly five miles of new aluminum wiring that's been installed throughout the city. Just to kind of show examples of the type of wire that's actually being stolen out of Oklahoma City, this would be a sample of, of some of the copper wiring that's being stolen, this is what actually connects the streetlights to each other that provides them power, but the new aluminum wire clearly is visibly different. If you were to hold these, you'll see that the weight of them is clearly a lot different too, but there's over five miles of this new aluminum wiring that's installed, and we're continuing to make those installations should we find some additional theft going into the future. So we believe that this is probably one of the biggest deterrents that's occurring is that it's just not a salvageable material, or at least not one that has a high cost for salvage, and so the aluminum wire has been, been highly effective. But again, as we work and work closely with OG&E and ODOT on new installations, we're working on aluminum wire installations, but also the addition of the placards, just to hopefully ward off anybody that might have a suspicion about what type of wires in those systems. As we move to reporting outages, this is where I'm going to turn over the presentation to Melina Moffett. She and Nicole Rhodes are both here from OG&E, but they've made significant progress on, on how best to report those outages citywide, and so we invite them to the podium to give that update for you today.
Good morning. So, can you move forward for me? When we first spoke about, I guess it was in March, referring back to what Eric said, we had two capabilities of reporting outages. One, you could call customer service at the four oh five phone number. Two, if you were an OG&E customer, you could go behind the login, so you could log into OGE dot com and report if your security light was out. We, we had a gap there in online, online reporting capabilities for streetlights. So what we did was we actually did this update, and so we wanted to introduce this to everybody today. Now, if you go to OGE dot com and you click on the streetlights in the kind of bottom right-hand corner, it's going to open up a form. This form will allow you to go online and report any, any streetlights that are out. Would you go to the next one for me? So this is the form that comes up when you click on, click on that streetlights button. It asks you your information as far as your first name, last name, phone number, email address, in case anybody needs to contact you back, as well as what's the problem. So what's really helpful for us is if you can be as descriptive as possible with what the problem is and where the location is. So there's a dropdown, and in this dropdown, it has multiple selections, it includes lights that are out, lights that are blinking, lights that are staying on during the day, and there's a variety of other options. Just select the option that's most appropriate for the situation, as well as give the best description of where those lights are located. Streetlights can often be difficult because they could be on the northeast corner of two cross streets. If you can give us the most descriptive location, even if there isn't a physical address, that is helpful. It helps us to identify where those lights are located, so we go and target the right lights for repair. So this is a new capability that was just introduced last month, and we wanted to introduce this to the council as well as the citizens, just to let you know that we, we hear the feedback and we're incorporating it, and so now we have this new online reporting ability.
That's great, thank you so much.
I might add that as soon as you report this, you will receive an email back with an actual work order number, so if you need to do follow-up, you can contact OG&E and we can give you the status of that work order.
Great, thank you.
So with that, I mentioned a lot of the progress that has been made. We are scheduled to make another report to the city council in about a month. I'd like to show you that the list has been cleared by that point, but we're obviously very active in working with ODOT on some of the coordination issues that I mentioned, some of the receipt of some of the hardware, but, but we're prepared to come back in another month and provide additional updates on street lighting in Oklahoma City. So with that, I can answer any questions you might have today.
So as we knock out the highways, will we then kind of be able to focus efforts? I mean, I, I don't know as much about the city streets, but I occasionally see people saying long stretches of city streets are also out. Is there, are we kind of able to focus on that next?
So I will tell you that OG&E is already focused on that today. I know that the reports that we're giving to the council have more to do with our highway and our bridge lighting as a part of our city infrastructure, but obviously neighborhoods are important as well. The new forms that OG&E presented, which have been online for a couple of weeks, we encourage residents to use those forms, that's how OG&E gets those calls to make those repairs. When we updated with OG&E last week, I believe there were approximately seven hundred work orders that they were working through that were submitted either previously or through that new system. And so that is an internal system to OG&E that they manage, as it's an OG&E-owned and maintained lighting system. LED upgrades is also a part of that process as well. So as we go into the summer months, it's possible that a lot of the systems too are waiting on an OG&E upgrade, similar to like what we're doing with Project One Eighty. So I expect that that'll probably be part of the upcoming conversation in the future as we modernize the system in Oklahoma City.
I just want to say, I mean, to the city manager and to you and your public works team and to everybody at OG&E and everybody in the police department, I mean, this is exciting progress as, since we started talking about this a few months ago, so thank you.
This really is a partnership and a team effort, and we appreciate working with OG&E. And I should have mentioned Deputy Chief Gorley and the interim chief Becker being here with us, supporting us in this, you know, dealing with both the theft side of it as well as dealing with the infrastructure side, and so it's a team effort to get this accomplished, and I appreciate that.
The police department added an extra person into, into the mental division, and I know that's made a difference, and you can tell, like, it sounds like with the number of violations that the metal recyclers know we're watching now, so, thank you. Any other comments or questions, anybody? Okay.
So the only other thing we have, we, I have two other reports, we don't have presentations on those, but the hotel tax collections, and then also on the investment report, and be glad to take any questions on that, or if you have any information, additional information you'd like, we'd be glad to provide that.
All right, and all of that can be found at the website at OKC.gov where the agenda is. You can access reports under the City Manager Reports that he just referenced. We have no citizens to be heard. Is this correct? All right, and we have no executive session. That concludes our business, and so we are adjourned.